So long this minute. The time is six P M. Will everyone rise and join for the pledge of allegiance? Let the record show, the board is all in attendance. Is there any correspondence from board or staff? Here I'm not.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, I guess. Last month I spoke about how frustrated I am with the state and county. Public works and their wise wisdom to do the road projects. Just seems like since the summer, traffic is just really super bad. So, I guess I'm very disappointed in our county for putting up stopping go lights that project. But they don't have any right turn lanes. So, I drive KK every eight, two, three, four times a day. And what really is frustrating is that there are not enough right turn lanes to keep the traffic moving. You had westbound, there's no right turn lanes on Eisenhower, no right turn lanes into that street where Pick and Save is and Panda Express and Coles. Then you had east to State Park Road and they did not put a right turn lane there. Why did we spend all this money and the county did not put a right turn lane? East and westbound from State Park Road so that going forty-five, you still are gonna have to stop the turn rates in that straight lane. You're gonna have more accidents there. So, I think we should as a board, future done item, ask the staff to write the county a letter telling them that we are not happy with that project, that there's no right turn lanes there. So, I guess that's, that's what I just wanted to say.
Now, just bring you guys up to speed. Russ, Chad and I are meeting with the county on Monday and we'll bring that forward. You guys had wanted me to go to the county board meeting, but it conflicted with the planning commission meeting. So, we decided to do this sit-down meeting instead. So, so we will bring it back to you and we have some information. We'll bring that forward. Okay? Any other communication? Matt?
Mentioned well and pass this around. This is the one of the actual aerials there and where they basically have, yeah, the arrow goes straight and the arrow that turns all in the same lane. Then they've got this confusing dotted line where I think they were trying to mimic some kind of turning lane, but the width of that asphalt to the south is too narrow for a car to fit down. And just, and don't tend to come here tonight. There's even a turning lane off of ten at State Park. So, not a big one, but there is at least a turning lane. So, why they couldn't have done at least that. I was trying to look at some of the right-of-way lines and realized they were probably working up against the right-of-way to a point here, but there's still plenty of room here from the aerials. And if they have over a year for the project, so if they needed to secure a little more revenue to do it right, they could have done all right for over six million dollars a year. Harrison residents pay the county. We're not getting proper services up here. So, something needs to change here and something needs to get fixed with this project soon before someone gets hurt. Those stoplights get put into and stuff and people aren't gonna realize and be slowing down. They're gonna feel a little more secure seeing a green light and all that, that we're gonna have more accidents, more problems.
We will bring it forward on Monday, Jeff.
So, we had similar discussions with them. They had Cedar Corporation designed it and the DOT was involved with it. So, let us bring, let us bring that back and see what the DOT responses. The, on that aerial, the dotted lines are now solid lines because when Jeff and I were out there, we said this is never gonna work because everyone is gonna have to get off on the gravel for this turn lane. So, they changed the course and they painted solid lines to there, but it still doesn't solve the issues of the understanding. So, we'll follow up with them and see what their response is.
Any other comments or communication? Okay, we will let you know what we hear on Monday. Okay, we have the minutes, previous meetings, August twentieth, the vision session. What's your pleasure? There are motion to approve. No, I'm sorry. All right, motion second by Henchday Baldwin to approve. Any discussion? Vote your ballot. Don't tell me my buttons not gonna work. Let the record show the motions carried unanimously approved. Okay, we have the minutes of the August twenty-seventh meeting. What's your pleasure? Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Van Hefty, second by Trustee Baldwin. Any additions or corrections? Here in none, vote your ballot. Let the record show the motions carried unanimously. Then we have the special meeting from September tenth. Is there a motion to approve the minutes? Motion by Scott, second by Mike. Any additions or corrections? Vote your ballot. Got you, push your button. There we go. Motion's carried unanimously. Very good. All right, public comments. We have two people signed up for public comments. Great, you're first on the list.
Reese Smith and nine five three six.
Okay, is that mic on? Because that's not. You're gonna have to bring the mic to, if that's not on. There you go. Okay. Now you have to start again, right?
Reese Smith and nine five three six, High Line Row. On here, Crossroad for me at the Melvin property. I like that single-family homes, not commercial. I'm just here to say that again. And I got one more question that a business park, a friendship road over there. I was always under the understanding that that was gonna be zone commercial and for office buildings. And I read that it's, it's gonna be zone industrial now. It's your truth to that.
It's own business park which allows for commercial and industrial. But as of now, I can tell you that there is no, there's no industrial.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, very good. Okay, Brian Leitzinger.
Brian Leitzinger, I reside at M nine one four six Brenda Drive. Excuse me. I'll be speaking tonight about item ten B under agenda. That pertains to a request from myself and our neighbors for a static radar speed limit sign placed for northbound traffic just north of the roundabout at Midway and Lake Park. I'm sorry, Manitowoc and Lake Park. The big problem that we're having is our backyards above up to Lake Park Road is not only the speed of the vehicles there, but the noise. So, as they go through the roundabout and start heading north, there's a lot of vehicles that basically hammer. When they do that, loud mufflers. You know, the sound is exacerbated by that. Just driving that, if you ever go north, you don't currently have to step on your accelerator to get to thirty-five miles an hour. There have been the county mobile radar boards that have been placed out there. There's one deployed there in June. The data is in your packet. It's pages one oh six through one ten. You guys can see for yourself the data from that. Evidently eighty-five percent of the drivers feel that the speed limit should be between forty-two and forty-five. And there's, there's a lot more cars going a lot faster than that. And I think the, the bottom line is, is that we need more traffic enforcement on Lake Park Road. And I know there's other streets and roads in the community that, that need more traffic enforcement. And I have to say that I'm pretty shocked at the disproportionate amount of warnings to citations in this current report that you're gonna get from the county tonight. One of the goals of traffic enforcement is to gain compliance, voluntary compliance from the community. And that can be done by several different ways. It can be done by deployment of radar boards. It can be done by just the visible presence of a squad as it might be doing paperwork. And there's also the self-initiated time of actually doing traffic enforcement, stopping vehicles or speeding. We did have some directed traffic in June from the, from the county and from our Harrison deputy. We saw a slight reduction in the amount of feeders that were traveling north and southbound, but it didn't last long. We very seldom will see the Harrison deputy or a county, county deputy squad car go by. When we do, it's, it's not the run traffic there. So, our biggest problem is the traffic noise and we're looking for help and some solutions to try to minimize that traffic noise. We understand we're not gonna be able to eliminate it completely. But it has, it has increased, especially since so many multifamily units have been built at the south end of Lake Park and on the north end. Thank you.
Thank you. And that's all I have for the public speaking portion. Okay. And we will move on. All right. So, we are on to our presentation, the twenty twenty-five property assessments by after assessors. And Kyle is here. This is at a request from trustees at the last meeting to go through an explanation of what's gonna happen in twenty twenty-five. Kyle there?
Yep, I'm here.
Hey, good. You wanna put your video on?
Yep. It says host has disabled sharing screen. So, I don't know if chat or someone can walk up and enable it so I can share my screen. That'd be great.
That cuts you off.
Right now.
Do you hear that? Try now.
Yep, yep.
Well, we're not seeing it. Oh, now something.
Okay, there we go.
Okay.
Okay, we're good.
Perfect. Okay, so my name is Kyle Cave. I'm an assessor two and an assessor three. And I'm also the account coordinator for the Village of Harrison. I'm here today to talk a little bit about the upcoming interim market update. I'll talk a little bit about it, but I'm gonna leave a decent amount of time to answer questions as I know it's been a little while since the last one. So, I wanna make sure that we have enough time to answer any questions that you guys may have and make sure that you get answers on those. Your team is pretty small because I am the statutory assessor and the account coordinator. We do have two other account coordinators that also help out if I were to be on vacation or out for any type of surgery or anything. If you do email this email here, both of the account coordinators, the other account coordinators have access to this email. So, you should always be able to get a response, even if I'm unavailable. And there would be a bounce back if I am unavailable, but just know that both other account coordinators have that email as well, so they can check it if I'm out. All right, so twenty twenty-four in review. The last market update was twenty twenty, or sorry, twenty nineteen. In twenty twenty-three, we saw a ratio of seventy point four three compared to what the state has for equalized value. And we estimate the ratio to drop to sixty-seven in twenty twenty-four. So, what that means in twenty twenty-five is we're looking at an increase that will be pretty close to fifty percent, if not more. Twenty twenty-four isn't done yet. Obviously, we've got the rest of September, October, November and December for sales to come in. So, we really aren't fully sure of what's gonna happen the rest of the year. Interest rates just dropped a little bit, so that could cause a little bit of a buying frenzy. So, we estimate that right now we're looking at a fifty percent increase on assessed values for twenty twenty-five. And that number could change depending on what happens the rest of this year. And once we go through and validate all the sales that are out there. In this past year and since twenty nineteen or since twenty twenty, we've had maintenance years. And in those maintenance years, we don't really change assessed values unless someone's changing the physical the physical things on their property. So, if someone's adding a deck, they'd get value added. If somebody's adding an addition, they'd get value added or taking away a shed or a garage, they'd have value removed. Other than that, we really don't change values in a maintenance year. We keep them the same because uniformity was set in that last interim market update. And uniformity will be set again in twenty twenty-five in this interim market update. So, those assessed cycles or assessment cycles can be a little confusing. And the easiest way to remember them is in a maintenance year, unless you're doing maintenance to your house or changing your house, there's not gonna be a change to your assessed values. In an interim market update year, everybody's values are likely to change. So, everybody in the municipality is likely to receive a new assessment letter. And, and those assessments are based off of sales. We start looking at sales after the first of the year. The first of the year is the cutoff. So, for the twenty twenty-five interim market update, we'll be looking at sales from twenty twenty-four in twenty twenty-three. We can't use anything after the first of the year because that's when the assessment cycle cuts off. So, everything's based off of twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-three. So, because twenty twenty-four is not over yet, we have the twenty twenty-three numbers here available. There were three hundred and fifty-five sales reported. And of those sales, two hundred and thirty-seven were valid sales. So, when we get sales from the state, we look over them and we determine whether they're valid, valid but not for ratio or invalid. In those sales, those sale documents we get can be quick claim deeds, transfers of names. Those are, those are ones that would be invalid. If you, if you sell a house to your neighbor for a dollar, that's not a valid sale. It wasn't on the open market. You knew your neighbor beforehand. Those sales get thrown out. If the house is on an open market and a valid sale, those sales are the ones that we count, we look at and use them in our data to determine what's going on in the market and how much of an increase needs to, needs to be put on each style in each neighborhood to get to where the fair market value is or where the equalized value is. Are there any questions on that part? We can ask more questions at the end. I just wanna know if there's any questions on that.
Looks like we're good so far, Kyle, so.
Sounds great. For the twenty twenty-five assessment cycle, this is an assessment timeline. Now, this timeline was made by our social media and our marketing department, so they space it out very nicely. Assessment timelines are a little more condensed than this. They're not necessarily perfectly spaced out. But you can see here, January first is the cutoff, so we're using everything that happened previously. So, any new construction, wherever that new construction is at, as of January one, that's what you're basing their value off of. So, if a apartment building is going up and as of January one, it's fifty percent complete, it would be assessed in twenty twenty-five as fifty percent complete, even though it finishes in twenty twenty-five. You wouldn't see that full value until twenty twenty-six on that. So, January first, we, is the cutoff. We're usually out visiting new construction, usually closer to January first here. And then late February, early March, the twenty twenty-four sales are due to the D O R. Those are the sales that we go through and verify. So, we have to go on the D O R website and let them know this was a valid sale or this was invalid because they knew the seller or it was a share of sale, the bank took it, whatever it may be. We let the state know so that they can come out with their equalized numbers and we can work on our equalized numbers as well. We mail out sales questionnaires multiple times throughout the year. If you buy a house, you will get a sales questionnaire. And that sales questionnaire asks, did you know the person you bought it from? Was it on an open market? Were you coerced at all or forced to buy this house? These sales questionnaires help us validate the sales and let us know if there was anything that wasn't already known as why that sale may be invalid. These sales questionnaires do, do a good job of giving us more information so that we can do our best to validate all the sales. Building permit. Inspections and checks. We, we do that and part of our fieldwork. I'll have a little bit more later in this presentation about when that fieldwork will likely be done. Then we run stats in view that state equalized values report, which is part of the reason why in interim market updates that they end up being later in the year for board of review. We want all the information that we can have to make sure that the Village of Harrison gets as close to a hundred percent ratio as possible. So, we like to have them later in the year so we can see that state equalized values report and see what happened in twenty twenty-four, where the ratio is and what they expect to do for twenty twenty-five so that we can look at our sales and see if we're matching up. And if not, we can get ahold of the D O R and let them know that, hey, we're seeing something a little bit different here. Can you explain what you're seeing on your end? And that working together with the D O R helps get those numbers as, as close to possible as a hundred percent. Then we would set the final values for the, or the preliminary values for the interim market update. And we would go through mailing the notices, open book, board of review. And then after that's all done, we do usually start early fieldwork checks for the next year. And then in December, tax bills come out. So, the twenty twenty-five plan for this interim market update here in Harrison, board of review will likely be late August to September. That's pretty normal for an interim market update, especially when it's been a couple of years, usually anything over two or three years. These interim market update boards end up being late August, early September to make sure that we have the most information available to us to get those numbers as close to a hundred percent as possible. We'll have open book to start in July. We usually like the open book in persons to be completed before the thirty-day mark away from the board of review. After thirty days, we can't send change notices anymore. We have to send out what are called waivers. When we send out a waiver, we need to get that signed back. If we don't get the waiver signed back, then we need to keep the board open until it's been thirty days since they received that waiver. So, that's why we like to have an open book completed, at least the in-person's completed before thirty days before that board of review. Notices will likely go out in early July, if not late June. And the field visits will be completed in June. We do send letters out to all the parcels that we're gonna visit in person to let them know that we'll be coming and visiting their house. We don't visit every single property. We visit properties that had building permits taken out, properties that had sales, ag properties, we, we visit, we check ag land properties. And we also, we check properties that residents call us about. There's a lot of neighbors who call about other neighbors having us go and check as they may have built something without a building permit. Or we do have residents that call in and say, hey, I'd like my house just walked through, just to make sure everything's up to date. And they'll receive a, a letter letting them know that we're gonna visit their property. And then during the field visit, we would come and walk through their property. This is an example of some of the frequently asked questions. This does say twenty twenty-four as this was a sheet we've been using all year for this year. We haven't had a twenty twenty-five sheet yet. We will go through all the questions that we had throughout twenty twenty-four and see if any of these frequently asked questions need to be updated into something new. There's a lot of good information on here and these go out with the notices. So, the notices that every resident gets, they will have a frequently asked question sheet with it right there so that they can look. They can understand what an interim market update is. They can look to see if the assessor is gonna visit their property or how can my assessment change if I haven't made a change to my property? A lot of those questions like that can be answered right here. We also have a frequently asked questions page on our website. And you'll see all these frequently asked questions before you would sign up for an appointment on the website. So, open book, open book is a, it's usually a two-hour-long period where that roll book is available for viewing. In a maintenance year, you, you talk to a smaller amount of people. If you have five people show up in a maintenance year, that's quite a bit. This year in twenty twenty-five, we will have multiple days of open book. Probably at least four in-person open book days as every single resident will get a notice. So, there will be a lot of people that have general questions, a lot of people who wanna bring evidence to try to prove their assessment should be changed. And, and that's what open book period is for. We welcome everybody to come in. We wanna talk to as many people as possible. We wanna answer as many questions as possible. That open book period for us starts as soon as you get your notice. We have an open book email that receives a lot of emails and is able to answer back on any questions you may have. In that email inbox is from the time you get your notice up until about seven days before board. So, we not only have in-person, but we also have emails available as well. And you can also call our office for those open books too. Board of review. Board of review is tentative for August and September, likely late August, early September. Board of review is where the assessor, the board and any objectors meet. The board of review would talk about things that happened a little bit with the assessor before we go into the cases. And if there are any cases, the objector would present their case, the assessor would present their case. And then the board would be able to make a decision based on the evidence they heard there and determine whether the value is. and determine whether the value is sustained or whether the value is changed. At that time, uh before those cases, the role is also handed over to Vicky and at that point, everything that's in that role is final except for the board cases that are being heard. Some important terms to know. I, one is compliance. Um, a municipality needs to be within compliance. And that is within ten percent of equalized value. Whether it's north of a hundred percent or south of a hundred percent, you need to be within ten percent uh once in a five-year period. So once you've been out of compliance for a while and you see at the bottom here, um, I do have this little uh graph that says major class municipal compliance status, no. That means that Harrison is out of compliance in that, and that's why we do an interim market update. We get within ten percent of a hundred, as close to a hundred as we can get, and then the municipality is back in compliance. And that clock, that five-year clock doesn't start again until you fall out of compliance, which would either be below ninety percent or above a hundred and ten percent. Equalized value, the value is set for each community based on the market value of the valid sales in the open market. So previously, when I was talking about valid sales and why we validate those sales, um, those valid sales suggest what equalized value should be. So if you have a home that's currently assessed at a hundred thousand, but it sells for a hundred and fifty, it's showing that the assessed value is below the current market. So when we adjust houses, we're getting them up to the current market. So that house that sold for a hundred and fifty, that's assessed at a hundred thousand, if it's a valid sale would move that house up to a hundred and fifty thousand. And then the ratio is assessed value divided by equalized value. Uh, the ratio, the equalized value is kept by the state, the assessed value is kept by the assessor. And these interim market updates get them as close to a hundred percent or the same as we can get. Um, educational plans, we we do have a marketing team on our staff that will help. I know I've already talked to Vicky about a letter in the tax bill kind of helping to explain some of the stuff they're gonna see in this upcoming year. Uh, we have a lot of marketing available. We have it on Facebook, we have it on LinkedIn. But if there's anything that the village wants specifically, we will gladly help make it and be able to provide it to your residents to help as it, the interim market updates can be very confusing. Um, we do have live, live assessors, three of them that answer the phone. So they can help as well. A lot of people with general questions like to call that line and be able to have those general questions answered without having to email anyone or show up in person. Um, we do also have newsletters that get emailed out. The sign up for the newsletter, you can sign up on Facebook or on LinkedIn. And then here is our general email info at accurateassessor.com. And then our number to get to the three live assessors is also on this slide. Here's an example of some of the education pieces that we can put out there and that are out on our Facebook. Um, this is an example of mill rate and how the mill rate can change and likely will change in an interim market update. Because the values are gonna change by so much, it changes that equation. So the mill rate tends to drop. We also have things like this. Um, we get a lot of people who call in and say, my house is exactly the same as my neighbors. Why do we have different values? And and this is a visual example as to why. Your house on the outside may look different than your neighbors. However, on the inside, with all the data that we have on both of these houses, they they may look the same. But they're they're not, and that's why the values are different. Um, just some helpful things that residents can look at, see posted on your social media and get closer to understanding what the process is and what things they should be looking for if they do have any questions on their assessed values. Um, do you guys have any questions that I can help out with?
Yeah.
Thank you. So um, for Chris, it hasn't been mentioned to us some of your different products at one of our meetings and I think it looks far from this. So is this truly the most complex product, the interim market update, or is there truly a revaluation? That was as well, or is this one of one of the same?
Yeah, so um, and I I apologize if I didn't hear all the question. Um, you were, you were a little muffled. But I I believe what you're asking is what the difference is between an interim market update and a revaluation?
Right.
Yeah, in interim market update, um, is where you take all the sales and all the data that you have and you increase the assessed values based on the sales data and everything that's available statistically. And you're not visiting every single property. A revaluation would occur if you're doing exterior or interior walkthroughs of every single property in the municipality. Um, the reason why those aren't as common is because they can be very expensive because you're going through every single property. In interior revaluations have become uh from an accessory standpoint, very rare. There was case law that changed uh not too long ago that it used to be if a resident didn't allow you into their house, they won't be able to, but they wouldn't be able to object to their assessed value. That case law has since changed. Um, the statute's changed on that. So now they can, residents cannot let you in your house and still object to the assessed value. And that's part of the reason why a full interior walks aren't as common anymore because residents, not a lot of residents let you into their house anymore.
Any other questions or comments? Are we good? Well, thank you, Kyle. This was very helpful and um, starting in 2025, I guess we'll start doing some education.
Yeah, and I'll work with Vicky. I'll work with Vicky to be able to set up some education so that we we have a lot ready to go, but right when we hit um, that new assessment cycle.
Okay, great. Thank you very much, Kyle.
Yep, have a great night.
You too. All right. And we are moving on to reports. Jared.
Thank you, Madam President. I'll start by asking if there are any questions in regards to your reports. Good. Um, I've got two things kind of on hot word uh right now with a fire prevention week coming up in October here. Uh, we typically schedule with all of the local schools an opportunity to get into the buildings, talk with the students and just talk about fire safety and fire protection, et cetera, et cetera. Um, we reach out to probably well, three hundred or so students. So we make three hundred connections and obviously they go home. I would give like low coloring books and things like that. And uh, hopefully the conversation continues when they do go home. The other thing that we have going on is something that has been an issue for quite some time. And it's in regards to our radio communications and the towers that we use when we communicate with the pagers and on the radio. Um, in the Harrison area, uh for whatever reason, sometimes it's challenging or impossible to hear what dispatch is dispatching for, which then becomes obviously a safety concern. So the conversation is is have kind of been spinning for a number of years. We've kind of gained some traction on this. And I have met with the sheriff and our emergency management director. And we've had a conversation with uh a different company. We kind of figure out what's going on and why it's happening. Um, our local company that we have been using for a long time has been telling us that there's, there's nothing wrong with your towers. Well, if if that was the case, we wouldn't be having this conversation. And I would have a a a big concern for especially the first responders that go out on a call in the middle of the night. You don't know what you're getting yourself into. So the conversation has started and it comes down to, we're not able to hear. It's all stat key, right? But the problem is kind of intermittent. It doesn't happen all the time unless you're over by High Cliff State Park. When you're at the park and you're kind of at the lower and by the lake there, the radios are absolutely useless. In fact, we have to use our cell phones to communicate with each other. So now we've gained a little bit of momentum and we are actively trying to figure out are we solving this problem? Does it, is it as simple as putting up a tower? Is there, is there something else we need to do? So um, to be determined, I guess, but at least we're, we're getting somewhere.
Any questions or comments?
Thank you.
Mark?
So for EMS calls, um, as far as are you required to go out to all EMS calls? I I know you go on a lot fast. I'm curious what you're.
Every time somebody calls dispatch and requests an ambulance, we will get dispatch and yes, we do go. We, we don't have the luxury of saying. Yeah, we, we do go to all of those, but.
Yeah, there's a lot of them in your report every month.
And then that's common and typical for all of the EMS and the bulk of your calls. The the chief, the law, the chief. How often do I go? Almost always. Yeah, I I go during the day when I'm, you know, in my sitting in my office and I also go at night. Uh, the reason I do that is I don't wanna give a break, right? All of our people are volunteers. So for me to say, well, you need to go on these night calls and get your butt out of bed, but I'm not gonna do it because I put in a full day at work. That would go like a dead balloon and that would be disrespectful to the membership. So I, I, I do want all of them. Unless, I I'm an intermediary or something's going on, but I can see on my app on the phone and we can all see who's actually going to this calls. So it's a communication tool as well.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you, Jared. Very good. All right. Lieutenant Tanner.
Evening, Madam President, members of the board. Any questions about the monthly report?
Matt?
Well, just a few comments, question. It's good that I mean, it will just. Can you explain a little bit on philosophy of vacation versus warning? Just trying to figure out how to address some of these traffic concerns and have people be be less in the village more seriously than I think they are.
It comes down to officer discretion and a lot of it comes down to what the community wants. So what may be acceptable in Rosendale? Probably wouldn't apply in Harrison. So you kind of meet the middle where what your community wants for your law enforcement as far as enforcement action of citations or warnings or arrests. You know, depending on what the violation is. And a lot of it goes down to severity. I mean, and the officers are more lax than others. It's there's a lot of human element to it. I know when I was on patrol, about ninety-five percent of the time, I knew if the person was getting a ticket before I even walked up to the car based on what the violation was. And reason for that was for fairness. Because if I stopped somebody previous for doing that speed, why wouldn't this next person get that same warning or citation for that speed based on whatever my tolerance level was? So that's you know, that goes into play there. So I could stop cars when I work midnight for ten over and arrest a lot of impaired drivers. But if I stop cars for ten over during the day, it would stop a lot of people from being late to work and that sort of thing. I there's a lot of fish going ten over during the day, whereas at night, there's a lot less going ten over. Um, at night, you'll find the average speed of cars are slower, but the ones that are speeding are going faster than what you would typically see during the day. Um, so there's a lot of different things that come into play. Um, and a lot of it depends on what shift you're working. So um, what I stopped for during the day, what I was trying to get at before is what I stopped for during the day was a higher speed than what I stopped for when I was making.
Hey, Darlene has a question for you.
Yes, thank you.
Listen, oh, that Darlene got a question in.
Well, this, isn't it, if you get a warning ticket, if the second, when you automatically get a ticket, don't you, or did they change that?
No, not necessarily.
Oh, I thought if you get two warnings in a year, it turns to a ticket. That's what I was told long time ago.
No. Um,
So you can just keep getting warnings?
You could. Um,
Really?
I
Wow.
I typically don't write people for ten over, but I did write someone a ticket for ten over once because they had half dozen speed warnings.
So you know what they have.
Um,
Right?
If you look up their uh, their record, you know, um, depends from agency share records, others don't. So you may or may not know if they have uh speed warnings or not.
Oh, okay. Matt, you have another question?
You get the follow up. I certainly don't want to be a rodeo dealer, so I get what you're saying there. Just trying to, and we don't solve this tonight, but just trying to figure out where we find the balance. And is there something that needs to be, you know, more looked at? Do we need larger traffic studies throughout the village? Do we need to adjust some speed limit signs then, for example, things where if we know someone's gonna go ten over and we're deeming that ten over is acceptable, then for example, should the speed limit on Lake Park be twenty-five? Then knowing they're gonna go ten over that speed limit sign, then you don't have people going forty-five and not being pulled over, I think is kind of the part of the, the issues here, you know, so.
Well, I, if if you look at the uh speed survey, um, the letter that uh Mr. Hamilton from the state wrote out for the speed study here on one fourteen, uh where he addressed reducing the speed limit to forty-five. Uh, without enforcement, you would then have cars doing more than ten over. Um, so without that enforcement aspect of it, you'd have cars doing a lot more than that speed limit by just dropping the speed limit. So that aspect um by his letter and he the traffic engineer wouldn't work.
When we know like what Lake Park, for example, designed for speed wise?
You'd have to check with the traffic engineer.
Right, thank you.
So looking at, um, do you want me to talk about Lake Park Road right now or?
Sure.
Come back up.
Okay, hold it. Hold it.
Hold it till we get started.
Okay.
All right, okay. Anything other than Lake Park that you have a question for Joe? All right.
All right.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Touch that in a few of them. All right, Russ.
Good evening. Um, if you're okay, I'll just stay right here.
That's fine.
I think I have a lot of.
Yeah, you're right. You're right.
Um, during this past month, uh, basically worked on two major things. Um, completed the uh budget that I'm gonna be handing out at the end of this meeting to you. Did a little bit of different format. I'll talk about that towards the end. And then I was working quite a bit with uh recruitment for a new finance director. And we have a closed session to talk about the status of that also a little bit later on the agenda. Um, usually attached to my report is a budget actual report uh that did not get in your package. There's an extra copy on your desk this evening. Um, so I'm not sure if there's any questions on that. Uh, but those are the major items that I've been working on this past one.
Any questions or comments? All right, thank you, Ross. And we are moving on to planning and zoning, Chad.
So in your packet, there is a number of projects that I just want to give you, uh, a key on, so the fire station sixty request for. Proposals was sent out on September third to twelve consultants. Uh, the proposals are due this week, Friday. Um, we've heard from three or four, we've walked through a number, with a number of the consultants through the station. Um, so we're hoping to get something and, uh, Jared and I are hoping to review them and be able to make a recommendation to the board for the October board meeting. Uh, fire station number seventy, um, by Google's, uh, there's been a number of meetings with them. Uh, to finalize plans, they toured stations last week to look at similar size, uh, building and size rooms. Um, we're looking at having them present the preliminary plan and the, um, cost. At the October eighth meeting, budget meeting, so that is confirmed, it will be the first item on the agenda. Um, before we go into the budget review. And then the BPW project, we've had multiple meetings with, uh, McMahon and there is a layout that is being for, uh, finalized at this point and there's. Uh, HBAT and electrical teams are working on that and they're hoping to have something to share for the, for the board meeting. Um, the rest of the things are pretty, uh, standard and we'll say that. Uh, we are doing first amendment audit training, I don't know if anybody, people know who that, what that is, but basically. It's, uh, people that come into the public buildings and demand to get into areas that are. Open to the public and it's all videotaped and they push it out on YouTube, so. Uh, we are planning to do a lunch and learn mandatory for all village staff in October. Uh, Megan has had some training at the clerks institute on this and I had some video. Training on this, so we're going to train all the staff on how to handle these situations and. Uh, first amendment monitors coming to our public, so, so that's it in a nutshell, I haven't got any answer any other questions.
Mark?
I'm at, uh, Earl Springs, trying to get, you know, talking here and there, you're.
I have the plans and I have the specs updated and I'm gonna be meeting with staff and it's probably gonna be like, what's it? This week.
Excellent, so. Um, it's like a. Timeline, so we love the bid, then we'll come back to the board meeting.
I want to bring it back to the board.
So, I'm gonna, we approve it, we can take it, still.
We can still get it constructed before the end of the year, hopefully.
Yeah, continue to the wire, it's out later, well, anyway, and, um, that would be great for this, I think, because everyone's excited with the. Students here, several forward and that's like safety and stuff, so. Good work on that.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay.
Thanks for all your hard work, definitely on this development, we're gonna hold it live, on the place, so.
Parks and Trails.
With Jeff and I, um, it's the same, but farmer's field, um, there's some pictures. In your package showing the paving of the road made, uh, in the parking lot and the line stringing, so that is. The staff is over there this week working up, uh, shouldering the parking lot and final restoration. Um, there is a board item for frozen bumpers to protect the, um, protect the pavement as an additional expense. Um, and we also been working with River Surge on the usage of soccer fields and some of. Um, the overusing of the field that has happened in twenty twenty-four and there's no any next steps to restore them. Um, contract for out for the Darby Park lighting project. Uh, tree removal is scheduled to begin this week, there will be a holdup from the original time, so hopefully that. Who gets out there, we did get a contribution from runaway shoes of eighteen hundred dollars to put screening on the pickleball courts. Uh, basically, uh, kind of like a vinyl screening to cut the wind and the, um, sun out, so we ordered them and they will be installed hopefully in the next. Piece. And we will be, um, thanking runaway shoes publicly once that which is completed and then we are set to close. Um, this week, actually, um, that county end project and village staff will be, uh. Installing the bench soon for the family's request.
Yeah.
Um, one of that bench is installed, we'll make sure we thank that family at long.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's a true way.
All right, what is River of Surge, is that Casa or?
It's.
Yes. Absolutely, but they, they have the new name, but it's the same group.
Thank you, thank you.
And the village has an agreement with them to move those six.
Any other questions or discussion? Okay. We are up to public works and engineering.
So they are, um, paving the state park road as we speak this week. Um, hopefully they'll be getting the final asphalt line stringing. Village staff will be doing the shouldering shortly thereafter and hopefully. Um, at some point here, there's something against the road can open back up to track. Uh, we've also been notified that the town board has accepted the North Coop and Midway intersection to become a four-way stop. Um, prior to the printing of the package, we didn't know if we were gonna have to share the front, but. Brian Glazer has confirmed that the county will be covering the loss for all of the improvements to make that a four-way stop, so that is supposed to be. Happening within the next few weeks. Um, Crossroads Business Park, our staff has been following play to that. Location to bring the subgrade up to low land, the contracts are finalized, instructions. Meeting in South and Inspiration of Utility will be happening in October. Um, Kane Heights and Cedar Ridge Estate to public informational meetings that are scheduled, notices have gone out to all. Uh, residents in those neighborhoods for October first and second, so McMahon will prepare a short presentation and will answer questions in the west. State Park, uh, Station Sixty paving is done, the concrete and the asphalt done. Uh, all of the asphalt resurfacing projects are completed, the concrete is completed and Kesslerville is completed and we build, we have built the. Village Sherman for the portion.
Do we want to talk about the concrete at Station Sixty?
Let's see, that's Station Sixty.
Mike, yours.
You weren't satisfied with it?
We met on site with the, um, with the local contractor who did the work. And they, um, there's some cracking that shrinkage cracking that is occurring. Um, near inside the building where they, it's kind of uncomfortable, I think. Um, so they are gonna be coming back out and be carrying that. Um, and then we, um, they did it, uh, they did the four all in one day and you can see where. Uh, the transitions happened and the painting isn't the best. Um, so I guess. Without saying a lot publicly, I, for being a local company, I would have thought that they would have. You know, try to do a little bit better job out there and, and, you know, it, it'll work, but it's not. Trying. Workmanship, if you will, um, and it's an unfortunate situation, but hopefully we can get it where at least. You know, it's serving its purpose and dealing with issues.
Yeah.
Thank you. Just with the four ways out from Uber anyway, just to, to make sure that, uh, what's doing with the county, there's lots of things the county can do better for us and with us. But can we thank Brian for the young, at least picking up those costs and at least they're getting some positive feedback along with the negative things they're, pretty good, but.
Have given them positive feedback, I've met already, though, also said we want to work together on our communication, we could do that work, so we can educate people about it as well.
Okay, maybe.
And this is a joint project between the county, the village and the city that we've been so all of us would be doing education.
Perfect, thank you.
Mark?
In, in respect to those stoplights on Midway and Coop there, you know, where the. Um, it'd be nice to get the flashing, um, stop signs because.
They are.
That could be, uh.
They are.
I mean, used to run through there and.
They are.
That's gonna be a dangerous intersection, so people can use that for these six, but, yeah.
Any other questions or comments? All right, we're moving on, um, Dicky?
All right, just have one, um, correction to my report, um. First page. Fourth paragraph, um, retention schedule today is just after a multiple, not a resolution. In. In the next month or the month after, we'll be looking at. A new, um, amended, amended ordinance. For the retention schedule.
So what we have in the packet is.
What you have in the packet does not include a reservation.
Okay. All right.
The elections are going, Dan Busters.
And we're prepared, right?
We are prepared.
Good, good.
Yeah, that has been written wonderfully. Getting everything out on time and. First thing in the morning, reprinting or putting the labels and getting the access developed, so.
Okay, Matt?
Thank you. Question on the last page on the ever report. Is this report have everything that we, there is still fifty-two thousand on the expense, we don't lose it, or is there some other adjustments that you think might sufficient?
This is what's been received since nine nineteen. Um, plus on the right-hand column, the grade. Um, the reset numbers are what is expected, anticipated to be left over. Um. But once we get through the agenda, that money will be gone.
Okay.
And if I may, any money that's left is gonna be dedicated towards the design service for the generator and.
Okay, so will this, will have a be that, it'll be taken care of so that we won't lose the money.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, very good. Harrison Utilities, Brandon.
Thank you, Madam President. This one's report gives updates on a few capital projects that I've been completing recently, getting those. Very low frequency drive, we have these installed at some of the rest stations. As well as getting pumps at the second lift station. Also highlights some developments, steps in developments, so the Harrison makes two infrastructure. Was accepted for the sewer water by utilities in early September and then in August, uh, permit is issued for the. The main extension of reason that students are moving around them, but. It's a perfectly important result, so let's. So I'll be happy to answer any other questions and.
Any questions or comments? Okay, thank you, Brandon, we've got another issue reviewed further on the agenda, correct?
There is the D and R.
Yeah, so we'll do what that done. Okay. We have approval of bills and claims, there are motion to approve. Bills and claims. That's a motion by, who was first? Mark, Mark and Julina's second, yeah, we gotta be careful. All right, any discussion on the bills and claims? Team of non-vote ballot? What the record showed, the bills and claims are passed unanimously? Right, we are up to appointments for the planning commission. Chad, do you want to speak to this?
Sure, so we, uh. Published a, a request for people to submit applications. For two vacancies on the planning commission, we received three applications. Uh, the two recommendations that we've had due to the president. Um, and we're recommending the board consider Lundy Pushman, Lynn Pushman to be considered for. Um, appointment and June Van Astin. Um, so we, in your packet are there applications that they committed and, um, I've got a chance to talk with both of them, I think they'd be good additions, so we're recommending.
So we will take motions independently, the first motion would be to appoint, confirm the appointment of Lindsay Krishman to the planning commission. Motion, motion by. Trustee Baldwin. For a second, second by, I did, Darlene, any questions, discussion? All right, vote ballot. Okay, and there's one nay, uh, Lindsay is appointed with the majority vote. Next up is the appointment of Drew.
Very interesting question.
Okay.
Yeah, in that seat in the pack, so we have the record, where, when does this commission expire then? For her, because we got people that have resigned, so we're taking up personal terms, so. We should just make sure that's clarified.
We can, we, I don't have those dates in front of us, but we'll mention those dates, we'll mention.
You just make sure they're slotted right.
Yep.
Okay. Uh, then this, next up is the appointment of Drew Ben Aston to the planning commission. Uh, Dicky, you gotta fix it this screen.
Sorry.
So is there a motion? Motion by trustee Heartline, there a second? Second by trustee Ben Hefty. Any discussion? Matt?
So my only question, I, it aren't me against the planes, individual to the planning commission, but seeing they're not a Harrison resident right now. I understand they're supposed to close on a house October fourth. Wish them well, I hope that I'll go smoothly, but we know sometimes things don't. And so I just really wondered if they would be better off, we have a body meeting on October eighth, and they just be one of the top agenda items to a point of then, October eighth would be after. They should already be a Harrison resident, so if there's time that they could come and serve at the October line, it should be.
That's a valid. Option, um, we wouldn't swear these people in until they obviously go to Harrison residence as well, so integrate whatever the choice of the awards.
Yeah, our meeting ain't until the end of October.
We're not, all right.
No. If they're not, you know, they. Well, there's a motion by Darlene, is there a second? Second by Mark?
Yeah.
To approve, to have contention on him physically moving in the area.
I mean, is there, I guess, is there a deadline date that we put on it, not that we have a submission tied up to, for. You hope not them go sideways, but. You know, for once.
You could amend the motion to have any. Date that they give village residents.
I think they'd have to be a resident.
Because before, before they even get sworn in, yeah.
But you have, right, but then you have this person level, that's all that happens and they don't move for two months, then we've got a traditional, and this is proper due diligence here.
And we would refill it like you would anyway, yeah.
But I don't know if they're already appointed.
You unappoint them.
And you unaway somebody, how does that work? That's what I'm saying, I think if we just do this right with the proper intention and emotion, we can avoid all of that potential issue.
Well, there's a motion or second on the table.
How do I make this, how do I make an amendment here? All right. Want to make an amendment?
All right, let's see amendment.
That they must become a village resident by November first, point one of the work. What's going on?
Well, that will be after a meeting, that's after a meeting.
Then they, but then they can be appointed, if something happens, I give them a month, here, whatever, if buying the property or whatever, so. Without reentering a deal or repolicizing the position, that gives a contingency diner.
That's fine, that's so. It does, it doesn't matter, is there a second? There a second to the amendment? There's a second by trustee Brandmeyer. All right.
We're gonna vote on the amendment first.
We're voting on the amendment first, all in favor of the amendment, vote ballot or vote ballot. Okay, one, two, three nays and four ayes, so the amendment to the motion. Passes, okay, now we're voting on the main motion, which is to. Point, appoint Drew Ben Aston contingent on. In gaining residency in Harrison, okay, we'll vote your ballot. Dicky, you gotta do something here.
We.
Yeah, now, now you're good. Okay.
Love staying.
How about we just all vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
We're paused. Okay, the motion to appoint Drew, contingent on him gaining residency is approved with majority vote, okay. Clear all that up and then. Okay, we're moving on, guys, we are, there's no old business, yay, no old business. Okay, first up is. I'm gonna see the thing. First up is our Eagle Scout project, Beverly Community Park. And Clover Ridge. Chad, did you want to speak to this?
Sure, so, um, there's Tyler Van, who is. A relationship. And that's, that's our client, we have all. Has proposed to do a recycling, uh, project with recycling bins in, um, the village's parks. He's focusing on two parts, Clover Ridge and, uh, Darboy, yeah, Darboy. Um, and then we'll ultimately look at them, from this field and dogwood, um, I would say that. That is supportive of this, however, I'm gonna invite your colleagues to visit the island project to see how, uh, the public reacts because. Um, if, if there's a lot of garbage in the, um.
Recycle.
If there's a lot of garbage in the recycling, this probably isn't gonna work. But we're willing to give it a try and hope that the public will work with us and separate out their recycling from their garbage.
So is there a motion to approve, motion by Scott? Second by Matt. Second by Matt. Any discussion? Vote your ballot.
I have a question for you, I just, only question on this, this is wonderful. By the way, I think this has been sort of needed for a long time. What is our plan as far as handling the recycling? Are we adding a recycling dumpster there at the park or what's?
So there'll be clear garbage bait in the recycling bin and the staff will bring the recycling back to the village mall dumpster. And it will leave the full stuff.
Okay, I'm good, thank you.
Any other discussion? All right, vote your ballot. Okay, where are the boxes? Okay, the motion to has passed unanimously. Howling the park requests to waive rental fee and donation. Vicky?
Um, this has been repeatedly being actually.
Oh, it looks like we already have a motion and second. We're moving on.
So just to clarify my motion, since there was a question on the dollar, uh, two different ones here, my motion would be for the thousand dollar donation. And our population is grown and a lot more children come into see that.
Anyone have a problem with that? Okay, vote your ballot. Motion for a thousand dollar donation and raving defeat is passing unanimously. Very good. Yep. Okay. Petition from residents of Stargazer Estates, request permission to plant trees in the right of way. Did you guys want to speak to this? Did you want to?
Hold me if you have a question.
Okay, all right, we'll let Chad talk about it first.
So the need owners of Stargazer State have submitted a petition to the village, which is attached to your packet. Uh, to allow the installation of street trees that are planted between the sidewalk and the curb. Um, in twenty twenty-two, I should know that the village board voted this down and denied allowing street trees. Um, at the time, these limitations on BPW staffing, um, and that's for even foresting department. Um, should the village board support this? Um, I've done some research and there is a number of models out there from similar size community. Um, where you could develop sets where people would, uh, be able to choose the tree from a referred tree. Uh, speaking, they would have to obtain a right of way permit to install it. And then sign some type of document that they're agreeing as part of the right of way permit to maintain. The tree and make sure that it stays alive and deal with it if there's any damage under, uh, snowing, snow clearing. Like conditions, um, all of these details would have to be determined and be brought back for future. Uh, boarding, but since we received the petition, uh, staff thought it was. Perfect to put it on the agenda and let the board decide if you want staff to work on developing. Over to implement this.
Matt?
Thank you, Madam President. So. This is a tough one for me. Because I am definitely in favor of trees. I like nature, go north. You know, trees are important. Free, both the urban heat, heat, uh, things cooler. And all that, and I think part of it is the, the, the village and past decisions of the village. With allowing such short setbacks and things have helped. Make this problem worse where people aren't, uh, only have much room to be able to put a tree in their main front yard. As they once would in other subdivisions. So I do think we need to have some kind of a solution and be able to have some shade in front yards. Um, I am concerned about the fact that we do not have. Any kind of forestry staff. Um, apparently, for example, the city of Appleton, they have a little man forester, it's all he does, he's the city forester. That has. Uh, plays under him as well. Um. We don't have the leaf pickup. Um, that a city does as well, but how do you handle the leaves and stuff getting into the road? Um, so. I don't know if there's a certain side stream or different thing or how we would. If I'd be looking for some staff input of how you could help some of those things to be addressed, I guess. And then I think you also, we need to have, um, something filed with the deed actually. With the county that follows the property, that was picked up that the property is sold. Who title searches and stuff, if someone really understands their responsibilities, um, as well. We're not against it, we just, there's some things we need to figure out, but we will office.
Well, staff is just looking for permission to proceed and develop that plan. So tonight they're asking, they're not, this is not to approve it entirely, but to develop the paperwork and plan to do this.
I guess they're right to hear from staff those, or that is, do they think there's some reasonable things to go down this road to try to develop a plan or still. You know, we just wait, you know, a lot of time you put in something that's still isn't gonna deal with wrestling these issues. Staff just a lot of things. Well, we haven't last night in twenty twenty-two, and I don't want to, we spent a lot of time trying to develop a whole manual and everything that we, the board shot down. And there's a lot of ways to set, so. Wouldn't have all those answers, I've done some quick searching to see if there is models out there, there is models out there, I think. We need to dive into those of staff and work, how it works and understand kind of what our limitations are related to that. And with bonus, we need to put on the homeowner and what the village can handle. Um, there is, there is some stuff that's unknown, I think that needs to be worked out in that. You've been at the Dallas point is change of, uh, the property sold, how does that get transferred over? Um, so there is gonna be, you know, some management stuff on our end related to this as well, so I. You know, I don't have all those answers today, and I don't want to spend a lot of time because it's an absolute no at this point. It's stupid for us to spend a lot of time researching.
Okay, Scott's got a question?
It's not so much questions, so, but when we last denied this, it was. The discussion was, you're not Appleton. Appleton has trees in the right way. They spend two million dollars every fall. Going around picking up leaves. We find ourselves as a village, as a board, to maintain a very low tax rate. We go down this path. We're only asking for a tax increase for staff. Equipment and personnel to pick up leaves as they fall on the streets between the sidewalk and the road. The reason why we are not Appleton is because if my yard, you want to put a tree in for a tree in the front yard. Village, the taxpayers don't want to be on the book. Especially myself, who has a ditch, who doesn't have a tree, cannot put a tree, should have to pay. Other people's leaves that fall down on the street, so it's a matter of fairness. We're all gonna be treated equal, we're all gonna have a little mill rate, so this is the reason why I say we don't have staff. Work on this, because if you want a tree, put it in your front yard, keep the leaves in your yard. Put it in, if the leaves fall on the street, I as taxpayer don't want to have to have to pay for someone else's leaves and pick it up in the street.
Well, let's, let's have a motion, so we give board some direction. Motion by trustee Baldwin, that's your motion, Julie. Okay, is there a second to? Prove staff to look into the issue? Looking once, going twice. Looks like there is no second to the motion. So it fails. Sorry, guys. Okay, okay. All right, um, next up. We have the request from the residents on Lake Park Road for the installation of a static radar speed limit sign, Chad.
So, um, just to start out with, uh, there is in your packet and it was referenced earlier. Um, there is some information, so there has been some targeted enforcement in this area. Uh, radar trailer had been placed at Lake Park and deep at Will, uh, Eaton Drive. Uh, the posted speed limit along, along Lake, what is thirty-four miles, so what you'll see later on is. It's not even for the village to change speed limits. Um, without doing an intensive study, either hiring somebody to help us do it or try to do it in-house. Um, so we are kind of limited by state statute over changing of speed, uh, limit, of speed limit. So it's not a simple easy goal by the board to do so. Um, this location, I understand the concern, I think, um. Joe has told me that the sheriff's department would be willing to enhance their, um. Their enforcement in this area and, you know, hopefully that does something, I guess I. I, it's, it's about thirty-two hundred dollars a sign for those, uh, static traffic signs. And I have a concern that if it gets adopted here, that every neighborhood that has speeding issues is gonna be coming forward. And requesting it and how do we, um, deny or accept future requests from neighborhoods to have these things all over. I think they were posted strategically around the village when they were purchased the first time. Um, and, you know, I wonder, I don't know this, but, you know, after company are up, two people just blow them off as well. Because they become part of the landscape and they're all over the place and they're not used to their best feeling either, so. Uh, I guess at this point, we have not been budgeted for, uh, this expense. We could budget for it in the future, if that's the board's, uh, decision, but there is other areas that have speed. Issues as well, so we can verify from those books as well, uh, going forward. So it's up to the board as to what you want to do, but it really feels like, uh, the sheriff's department needs to, uh, do some. Uh, additional enforcement in, in these areas.
I got like five people with comments. Okay, Joe, my first, my first question is, okay. There are a lot of warnings got, uh, it, can, can you track and see, especially on Lake Park? If it's the same people getting the warnings every time, I mean, can we, can we zero in on those people that are. Constantly repeated, repeatedly violating.
Okay, I look at this list here, um, it was provided. Good portion of these are people, um. Warnings for vehicle problems, registration. Uh, historically, we give all warnings for those violations. There's a couple speeding, um, violations that I'm going to have to look into on, on this list. And, uh, see why the ones were due instead of a segmentation. Um, but as far as, um. Having, you call it repeat customers on Lake Park. When you're looking at, um. Several thousand cars a day. Um, driving on that road and it's. Very difficult to come across the same parties. Not common to come across the same person speeding. On that road. If you want to try. However. I could encourage officers to take a look into their own fires for the.
Darlene had a question.
I'm not first.
Trust you, trust like Heartline is, oh, okay, sorry, Matt.
Thank you, Madam President. So a couple of things on this. I, we probably should buy more signs. I do think we would need to have a strategy around the signs. Um, I'd like to understand. I know the board, we haven't seen any reports, I don't know if staff has pulled any data at all from the signs that the village purchased. And in the packet here, this is only the, the radar board, uh, not the individual permanent ones. I'd like to know what, what we're actually seeing there. Um, there was a resident that was frequently. Uh, unhappy about the speeds on Noe Road. And I know we put up a permanent speed sign there and, uh, I ran into that gentleman the other day and. He kind of gave me a very look and I said, well, we put the sign up and stuff, aren't we, aren't we helping? They just, well, right by now, he says, so without data, I may not have. Like to understand data, I guess, is what I think we need to, and probably it's just good practice anyway, there was money spent on those existing signs. And so if data is not being looked at, it really shouldn't be, because I think that can be shared with the sheriff's department and possibly help with targeted enforcement. Um. In other places as well. And then, and then speaking to this specific on Lake Park Road. And you think we've got to figure out. From an enforcement standpoint, where we want to go, I certainly do not want to see us be a rote bill. But there is definitely something to presence and, and people, you know, if you're going to know over fifteen over, whatever it might be. Um, and I appreciate within a ten or definition, that was helpful. I know there's a future agenda item that's been on there for a few months here. We didn't ever set new date on it, and they're going on, so, you know, it's quite still kind of sitting there, but. It was to have really a discussion between the board and the county, the county sheriff's department with our contract with for law enforcement and staff. With realists to collectively discuss law enforcement in Harrison. And I think this discussion tonight really points out the need for that discussion. To happen sooner than later. To really make sure that we're having a partnership between all parties involved. Um, on what we're trying to be and what we're trying to represent and, and where we want to go with things. Of course, given the sheriff's department discretion, so doing their job, I hope you do not take this as trying to tell the sheriff's department how to do their job every day. Um, they're the professionals, but there, there needs to be a. A vision or a mission or a panel of what, where we're trying to go, and they can help guide their law enforcement decisions. And I wonder if as part of doing that, if we would even invite a couple citizens to sit in or also provide input on that. Um, and all there is, I believe his name was Ken, that had found out frequent concerns about Woodland Road. Maybe he would be willing to sit in on something, maybe Brian, um, would be willing to sit in on, on some of those discussions. Make sure we're getting some citizen input as well, because there is certainly a careful balance with that. Again, I don't want us to get Rosendale and have T-shirts made out of this and all that, that doesn't do anybody any good.
Okay, we have, we have five other people waiting to speak. All right, so next up is.
I, I just want to point out that we have for Lake Park Road, there's Appleton, Manasha and Harrison, all that own most of it. All of us do, so you can't really change a speed limit in the middle. We only own half of the other part and Appleton owns the other part. So you, you can't, I don't think you can really, I think that makes no sense. I'm, I'm just saying that I don't think it's a good idea.
Okay, it's Julie.
Okay, your two confessions, about a year ago, I was driving through Carcana, feeling like, ah, like, bye, guys. Seeing that, um, the officer pulled me over, thankfully he gave me a warning, I was very apologetic and everything, but I'll tell you. That in my mind, that warning is there was a behavior change for me, I do not speed down, especially down that road, but I really like to watch my. Um, and I believe though that if I get caught doing that again anywhere in Carcana, if so, you know, the stopping officer. Would point back and say, hey, you already had a warning, you know, I deserve the ticket then, so I know it could be an administrative nightmare, but. You know, what I'd like to see is just, you know, camera down on those people who don't seem to get it. There might be few and far between, but we work with spread that, you know, you don't speed on that road, operating the roads.
All right, Scott.
Thank you, um, we're. Question. I don't think we can put the village along the sign, uh, Lake Park Road that is coming right away.
When it was constructed, it would feed its back over to the village next.
Thank you. So then, I guess, the other. Point along me, and I'm for speed signs because I catch myself even on the street over by my house. I'm going along, zip-a-doo-doo-da, and actually, you know, I see I'm going thirty-nine and then thirty-five, you know what? I slowed down, right? So, I, I guess, I'm for these signs, but I guess. This is just gonna be part of the process, because. For me, I believe that we should give our citizenry every opportunity to correct their behavior. And we need to be able to, um. Reiterate to them in many ways possible without getting a ticket that they need to slow down. Eventually, after we put up all these speed signs and people are still not gonna get it, it's gonna be inevitable. That we're gonna have to actually do some more law enforcement, uh, as far as speed, um. Enforcement, so the reason why I believe Lake Park is. A street that we need to give tickets on, this is my opinion, same thing with coming in. Is because people get off on KK. And to get to Highway ten to go east. It is so much faster to go down Lake Park Road, zip down Woodland to get on ten. Same thing if you're coming southbound four forty-one, people do not get off on Onida Street, go all the way down to one fourteen. And then go that way, they get off on Lake Park. Or they get off on KK, they go down Lake Park, they zip down. And that to me is, uh, I and I and I believe. Certain streets, we need to start giving out tickets, not saying every street, every where we start giving out tickets, but I think Lake Park and M are. To the streets that people are using to get through the village as quick as possible, they don't. They don't take one night off. And I'm going to give one more last soapbox each year is. Instead of the state of Wisconsin, giving a hundred million dollars. To the airport for three flights a day. We are getting zero money in the second fastest growing area in the state.
Okay, I got I got to stop you there.
And the county is not giving us our. Portion of money to build our infrastructure. To be able to alleviate the traffic in in the crossroad areas, we are a crossroad community now.
Okay, 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 we can't, we can't control the federal government, we can't control the airport funding, uh, Annie, okay, so. Sure, well, which motion?
Well, my motion would be, uh, as a trial here, purchase one speed sign. Going north on Lake Park Road. Seeing that's my hearing from the residents, it sounds like the problem area, they're coming out of Roundabout and Antwack. And Lake Park, and then they go north into the city of Appleton, and that's where most of the concerns are coming from. And seeing that we're having pull from um, fund balance for this, that we purchased one of these and see how it goes. Um, and then just, this is part of the motion, but just understanding these steps is going to really start looking at some data and let's really see how these are are being effective.
There a second to that motion?
If I make another comment. That I think this should be part of the budget process, we should be just. This would have to be something I think that would be able to be drawn up in a budget, I think, session, we should just be. You know what I mean, I just.
I'll just add that my motion, then instead of working on the budget, to incorporate any one of these speed signs into the budget, shall be installed twenty twenty-five.
Okay, so there's motion and second to to bring in the the speed sign to the budget meeting and the budget process. Any discussion?
We both want to discuss. When you, when you push the button earlier. Trying to discuss. You're you're the same button pushed to make it.
Or we can just thought, okay, so there's a motion and a second to include. One speed sign for Lake Park Road in the budget process, so Russ, that means you get to redo all your numbers all over again. Is is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye. But they don't have this set yet, you got the stick, Dicky? All right, all votes valid then. I thought we were still locked out. My button is not working again. One, two, three nays and four ayes to discuss it in the budget process. So no guarantees, it may or may not end up in the budget, but you understand. And um, Joe, you kind of know what the board was thinking of as far as a little more pressure on the enforcement end. Okay? All right, we're moving on then, very good, thank you. Okay, we are to ordinance, V twenty-four dash thirteen and zoning map amendment, residing in John Dietrich. W forty-two, ninety-seven County B, Chad.
Well, this is to create a playing lot off of uh. County D, uh, basically the key owners, the gentleman owns both of the parcels, he is looking to build a house in the. Zoning to build a house on this way, that's the planning commission recommended.
Motion by Matt, second by Grant Meyer, any questions or discussion? Vote your ballot. My button's not working, Vicky. I'm like, okay, all uh, motions carried unanimously, very good. Same parcel, same issue, but this is just to approve the certified survey map. It says, almost dead. With motion, there's a motion by Lancaster, second by Ben Hefty. Any questions or comments? Vote your ballot. Motion's carried unanimously, very good. Okay, site plan for Darboi BP alterations, Chad.
So when the team is here, that's uh, the design engineer runs jointly to do this project, so this is. To add a uh, new cafe dining area within the current Darboi BP. Uh, station, there'll be no additions to the building, uh, but there will be a drive-through and some. Changes to the parking lot outside the uh, planning commission.
There's a motion by Mark, a second by Darlene to approve. Any discussion? Vote your ballot.
My my only question is, um, we expect any change of traffic count that we need to be thinking of.
All right, vote your ballot. And the motion's carried unanimously, very good. Okay, we have certificate payment number one for the twenty twenty-four asphalt resurfacing program, thank you guys. Uh, to pay MCC for three hundred and eighty-two thousand thirty-seven dollars and eighty-four cents. There's a motion, oh, somebody stepped on. Oh, there's a motion by Julie. Who's who's seconded it, I I lost it, who's second, it was that, Mike, Mike, did you second? Okay, if I, okay, Scott, yeah, okay, all right. All right, any discussion? Okay, vote your ballot. Buttons now, okay, motions carried unanimously, very good. All right, certificate number two for the same pro for the service. Asphalt street resurfacing for three hundred ninety-five thousand six hundred eighty-eight dollars and thirteen cents. Okay, did somebody already hit buttons for, okay, is there a motion? Motion by Scott, second by Darlene. That was a motion by Scott, second by Darlene, approve. Any discussion? All right, vote your ballot. I think I need new batteries in my button thing, okay, all motions carried unanimously. Okay, we have certificate number one, payment for state park road construction for MCC for two hundred thirty-eight thousand nine hundred eight dollars and eighty-five sec. Cent, motion by Scott, second by Darlene, any discussion? Vote your ballot. Motion's carried unanimously. Okay, in your packet is the uh, proposed. Protective covenants for the crossroads business parks. And they've been reviewed by the attorney. Any questions or comments on the. Protective covenants?
Well, the only question I have on is that I was thinking that should be a line item in here, because there should be a minimum value improvement. For a lot or per acre basis, to make sure that we're. Protecting and getting the higher dollar projects on this to make sure that it they value and. Um, it'd be similar, and it's very common, um, similar what you see in residential construction. Like we've seen in things as well, we're having covenants, that they'll have minimum spare footage requirements. Um, for single story, two-story houses, that kind of thing, because the developers going for a certain low field value, they want to make sure that's. I don't know, question I have for Chad. Is what he thinks about that and if we know what kind of value, you know, is it a half a million, a parcel or something like that, we'd be trying to look at. Make sure it's taken care of properly.
So the value, I think, is around five hundred and fifty thousand per acre. So what I would recommend is that the third, so chooses to include these to. Uh, and the condition that staff works on the final value, getting appropriate that in it.
What was the number again?
It's around five hundred and fifty thousand.
And I just got a quick question, you need us to approve this tonight because of the other items on the agenda tonight? So we can't delay this.
Well, we can make a motion, make a motion to amend, add this line item and then we're good to go.
Yes.
Okay.
So is that's a motion you're making?
Yeah, well, we got to make this motion, and we'll make a motion amendment.
Okay, all right, so there's a motion in a second to approve the uh, protective covenants.
Okay, now I'll try and make the motion for you and then you're.
So there's a motion in a second to on on the main motion.
Yeah.
To approve, then we need to make the need to amend.
I'll be making this motion to amend, that's great.
And uh, we're going to incorporate the ASML that staff recommends. There a second?
You can.
Second.
Oh, yeah, second, yeah.
Oh, you got to wipe out Mike. Wipe them out. Wipe them out and delete them.
Well, this is, oh, you don't want this.
We can't.
Can't second a motion that you stuck in the.
So Lancaster somehow has to hit second.
They get the little motion.
Somebody, somebody did there.
Okay, so motion by Matt, that they amend to amend, and a second by Darlene. Julie, or Julie to amend. To amend the motion, to include the base rate.
Of five hundred.
Yes.
Per acre, yes.
All right, are you prepared to vote on the amendment? Dick, you got to hit the button.
Trying to get a warning.
Okay.
When you add motion.
Vote, vote your ballot. On the amendment, so the amendment passes unanimously, now we're back to the main motion. The main motion is to approve of the court. All right, any other discussion?
Amendment, as amended.
As amended, as amended. So we don't need another motion, because we already did the. Okay, so now now we vote on the amended motion. There you go, and it's carried unanimously, very good. Okado. So we have the file plaque for the crossroad business park. And all the information's in your packet. Planning Commission recommends approval. And there's a motion by Matt, second by Scott. Or was it, yeah. Yeah, Scott, any discussion? All right, vote your ballot. Okay, motion's carried unanimously. We have an offer to purchase lots, three in crossroads business park. Staff has recommended approval.
But if you can amend it to include a review on this by the village attorney, because we ran our time. We have the village attorney will get it for the next.
Okay, so I don't think anyone's to hit for the motion, right, so motion by Scott. There a second by Darlene on the main motion. Wait, on the main motion, for looking through, now you're going to hit it to make. And now we need a motion to amend.
My question, it's only hit one here, see, I have a question before we make that, because I think you need to amend the story way. More for questions for God, last the village attorney. The right way here, with my entertaining of real estate here, we have an offer from the individual. And in order for us to then include these protective covenants, we actually need to counter their offer. Adding that language, don't we?
No, because these uh, final, like I said, the doctor has the protected covenant, so they're subject to that.
Okay, well, just by nature, there's something that I would now having to incorporate in a real estate office, so, okay, all right, thank you. Well, I guess it's.
Okay, so so on, okay, so, but we do need to amend, amend the motion. Pending pending.
I'll make the amendment, then the motion pending everything by the.
And a second for the amendment is by Mike. Any further discussion on the amendment? All right, vote on the amendment to pass review of legal counsel. And the amendment passes unanimously, now we are voting on the amended motion. Any discussion? All right, vote your ballot. Okay, there it goes, all right, motions can pass you now, very good. Okay, Cameo Court, Chad.
So we uh, can send out letters to approximately fifty uh, residents in Cameo Court area. Uh, twenty-seven of those neighbors took the survey, the survey is included in your packet. Um, in the first page, eighty-three percent of the residents were in support of a park at this property that the village. Lot, however, when you look at the comments later on, um, people wanted to kind of change their mind. Although the people right next to it are real excited about it. Um, so I thought before the village staff spends time on planning and doing all of that, we would bring this back to the board. Just so you can see the results of the um, survey for the pocket park, see if you still want staff to work on this. Or if you want us to hold off on it, I know that I can't, we want to see who has a suggestion that might work for the time being, but. Um, I guess I want to give.
Thank you, so what I believe we should do for now, because there is some. Future planning and things that we would need to do around the trail around the pond, and I just, because I had. Probably a future years type thing. Is for now. I don't believe there's a lot of expense to the village to keep this mowed. So we would keep this mowed, maybe add a couple picnic tables. Maybe plant a couple strategic trees along, you know. Smaller stuff along property lines, maybe to help define some things a little bit, but not spend a lot more money on this right now. And wait and see, but we would do a trail here around the pond. Perhaps the property to the east gets sold and gets into something where this becomes part of a larger effort, um, ocean park land as well at that point. We're not spending, you know, a couple hundred dollars on parking equipment, playgrounds or things like that.
Julie.
Yeah, I I remember when this came up and I did not support doing this, um. I guess we don't have a choice, and we have to do something with it, so even if that's just mowing it to your point, putting up a couple picnic tables or something.
But we could, we could put it up for sale again and resell, we don't have to keep it as a park, we could sell it. And then to a private developer.
Right, that's good to know, then um, I'm just going to draw my comments then.
Well, it's it's a valid, it is a valid point, because even though we originally decided. Because I also spoke against having it come off the tax rolls. Okay, um, and in looking at a lot of these comments, I mean, it says eighty-three percent of the residents. Now, it's only eighty-three percent of the people who responded to the survey, so it's eighty-three percent of twenty-three people. Um, but talking, top, reading the comments. Um, the biggest concern people have is is the on-street parking. And I don't know, even if we put in picnic tables there, you're going to encourage traffic. And we don't have any kind of a plan in a cul-de-sac area. For on-street parking, I mean, do we put up no parking signs so that even people that live there can't park in front of their house? Um. I I go back to, you know, I I would just assume, sell this piece of property, put it back on the tax roll. Build a single-family residence and um, that way the neighbors right next to it are impacted, it becomes back to what it. It was in the beginning. Okay, Scott, you're next.
This is uh, my new point. And I've had many, many people talk to me, they're.
Talk to me, they're genuinely excited about an opportunity. To have a trail around that potential. The only way you can access that right now is through that property that. In talking to residents, there's a lot of residents that have. Small children, so if we had some sort of small children playground front. I think that would be unobtrusive. You can make this into a very subtle area with just. An area just put connecting to the trail. Everybody in that neighborhood in my neighborhood has a daughter. And everybody walks up and down the street, so the opportunity instead of having to walk. All the way to Darwin Way Park to enjoy a trail. Everyone is in favor of that. The reason why some of the comments came in on the survey was because. There were those who believed that we were gonna put some sort of big huge jungle gym and we were gonna put. Basketball court on there or something and. The people just wanna be left, it, it's a very quiet neighborhood and they just want something that is very quiet, and I explained this to Chad. And I think people would just like to have something soft. Unobtrusive and just the ability then to connect to. A trail that goes along with retention pond, and the only way we can get a trail to that we touch upon is to move this property unless we. Um buy from land from the Itonbrook family on. Is it peaceful? It's fully real. Oh, I'm sorry. Um so. And then Chad gets it, but if we want to redo the survey to make it less. Hey, we're building this big park, cause that's what kind of people were like, well, we don't want a big park where everybody's gonna come to, you just want something very soft so that we can. Have a trail around the. The retention pond, which my contention is every retention pond and every neighborhood should have a trail on it, I don't know why we don't. Well, that's something that I hope.
Really, or you. Another option that I could be done in. We could, since we own it, we could, if that's what, you know, they really wanna, we can look. We could also look at creating a separate easement parcel to get, you know, the kind of the south side of this lot. To get out there, you know, maybe put a chain link, then could have a pathway to get similar ones over by Woodland School in neighborhoods to connect. From the street to get to the back a lot, so we could look at that and still. Maybe sell the rest of the property off for redevelopment and, you know, still have the access unless the neighborhood really wants to see that as a, as a.
I don't think they're looking for a big park with jungle gym and, you know. Part in front of it, they're just hoping for.
I think we thought it would be a small kids playground and maybe a little uh canopy that would have picnic tables to get out of the sun and have a baby.
Matt.
Thank you, so I, I think what should happen here is. I'm up with the concept to have something like that, a couple picnic tables, something really small, a small little canopy down to the sun. I think that should be shared with the neighborhood. Get the be the. Before the living else do. Um, it would be a shame, I think, to do a mistake, I think, to sell this, because. We don't know what's gonna happen to the east there. We definitely, at the very least, need to be able to access the trail around that pond. Um and you think about other subdivisions, this subdivision kind of got drawn and ill, if you ask me. With not being any kind of small park. Um, a lot of other subdivisions, you think about Dogwood Park, for example. We have little parks in neighborhoods, so. Dogwood doesn't, doesn't have parking either, it's on-street parking. And there were any complaints over there at all about parking. Hopefully, there's a lot of, I think, because there's not a lot of people that drive, there's just a small neighborhood park, you have to go immediate neighbors, walk a couple blocks too. And maybe they're walking their dog and wanna take a break and they have picnic tables in it for a little bit and can be on their way for that.
I would like to add to the staff. Assessment and about the possibility of doing just the pathway to. Pond and no picnic tables, no jungle gym.
That have to be.
No.
Don't get to direct the staff on any.
Well.
That needs to be something where that.
Matt just, Matt just made the, 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 the recommendation to staff. Could look at.
You're making a different stuff.
I'm just adding to man.
Actually saying.
No.
Spend time, that should have to be.
Kind of order, I was speaking.
Oh.
Kind of order, I was speaking.
Don't get to tell. Need to use your.
Yes.
Player.
And I was actually piggybacking off um Matt's trusty Lancaster's. Suggestion, okay, Matt suggested looking at putting a picnic tables in a little covered area, and I'm saying. Instead of looking at picnic tables in a covered area, let's look at just putting the trailway down to the pond, so I'm not, that's not. Directing staff to do anything different than what Matt was already suggesting, and I'm saying, look at two options.
So I think what we'll do is we'll put together different pictures of ideas that. Are less intrusive and send it back out to the neighbors in a survey and see how many taken and how they rate you different options and bring that back. We've got all winter planned, that's, I'm not doing anything till next spring anyway, uh so I think let's, let's go back to the neighborhood and see what they left.
Right. Okay, so you guys have your, you guys have your direction then?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I wanna follow up here since. Questioning, question Steve, so this. We already made a motion to back purchase property. Turn it into a pocket park. In order to then turn around and sell it. After we already made a motion to turn into pocket park. Do you want that staff to work on that, that has to be in the general item? And that has to be brought up properly, not just direct staff, oh, we want to. Not only just make it a pocket park, but also an option to sell it, no, that, that's, that's giving staff direction.
Is that.
That eats, and I'm talking though. You don't get to direct staff to add this and that. Especially when it's totally different than what's on the agenda. You have to go through the proper procedure of. Putting it on the agenda for a topic that it gets put on the next month to discuss. This topic was. Survey results. Annual for park development and next steps. And in there was not anything in the packet here saying, well, let's parcel it off. And sell it back as, as a host or as a, as a merchant property, so that would have to be done properly, and that would look like. Thank you.
Andy?
Well, the notice says motion has determined by board. So there's no motion unless it's made by the board. And or someone can make a motion to. At this point, far as parceling it off, that would have to be separated. That would have to be noticed and run up and separate here.
Matt.
So the one thing I wanna say that I wanna add in here, and I don't know how best way to get this, but to do this for city. But when surveying the residents, there are the science and surveys, and we need to make sure we're not designing a survey to get answers, that is really, make sure that it's truly open-ended. So I like the ideas and pictures, but also the feedback. And make sure how we get the entire neighborhood to participate. Uh I don't know if you could actually maybe this time require addresses, require some information, so it's not anonymous. It's so easy to react to stuff anonymously versus truly. Put your address to it. Um, be, and make sure that we're truly getting a representative information from the entire neighborhood. Because of course, now we're taking care of the, the neighbor right next door. Was actually, I spoke to them myself. Was very in favor of us buying the property and carrying the house down and bringing the pocket park here when. They were staring at a burned-out house for six months, but and did not like the smell of burned-out things, but now it seems like perhaps. I don't know, we don't have addresses here. I don't know if they changed their mind or not, so I think that. It's important that we get a full representation of the neighborhood. Uh because also the feedback I had got from the neighborhood originally. Who was, which is why I voted, I think she listed some feedback from the neighborhood before I voted to purchase the property, was the neighborhood was excited for this. Because they felt left out, because they did get a small park, like many of ours have division had, so.
We don't, we need to, we'll bring this back.
Alright. Okado, moving on. Sharing the results from speed study by the DOT on Highway one fourteen. Chad.
So you see the letter from them, they uh looked at the uh speed limits out there, they're not recommending any changes, they looked at the crashes and it's not near the. Uh, it was like seventy three point one uh percent and the rate statewide is ninety one point four in the threshold, so. Uh I guess at this stage, they're not recommending any change to the fifteen, thirty-five miles of order, I think. Um. Guess we don't, it's really in here for your information and. Though somebody else happened out there, I don't think we're gonna see much change.
Matt.
Thank you, so two questions. Number one, in light of this, how do we get some lighting on state highway? Be- because this is extremely dangerous out here, I'm sorry. I have responded to numerous accidents and fatal ones up here. Something needs to be done, I realize. Traffic engineering is the traffic engineering. But at the very least, we need to do, do whatever we can, so I think somehow, how do we get lucky? And number two. How can we, wanna do this the right way? I believe information like this needs to be that we shared in the right format, of course.
We will share it publicly, not just in a packet, so the public knows we are doing what we can as a board in our limitations. It's on the list to go out until it was leading into.
No, that's, I, I don't, I'm not criticizing staff for that, it's, that's, right on, I was already asking the question.
We will get it out there because there was a lot of interest when we originally said we'd write. Mission escape, look at this, so we'll share the results.
Yeah, so we did leave the residents, no more staffing, board.
Okay, Scott.
Was this initiated by us?
Yeah.
Yes, can we share this with. On the coin, Highway Commissioner, please, because there's. Yeah, because there's a certain uh. Supervisor that seems to think that too fast, so it'd be nice for him to see this, that. You know what I'm talking about, yeah.
Okay. Okay, moving on, uh we're up to authorize seeing the village engineer to complete a speed study. Between Manitowoc Road, Lake Park to the West Village, Chad.
So uh one of the future agenda items that trusty Berlin put on the agenda last month was to look at speed limits along Woodland and Manitowoc Roads. Um. What I would say is uh previous correspondence with the board from previous staff indicated that the village board has the. Uh rights to change the speed limit that the bus reminded, that is not through uh first aid statute, you have to do an engineering speed study. Um and look at crashes and speeds and those kinds of things and make a determination based on eighty percent of them. So in talking with Lee and talking with Jeff, we have, and the sheriff's department, we have the capabilities to do this. In-house, however, we can't do both Manitowoc and Woodland together, so we uh would like to pilot the. Uh try of doing this along Manitowoc Road from Bray Park to the West. Village Limits, um somewhere along water treatment, eventually that change is over. Um and then, and what we have the pneumatic road tubes uh to put on the road, we have the speed trailer to put out there. Try to get the information we need and working with McMahon, report back to the board. Um on what this would look like and whether we would be able to change the speed limits in there and then continually develop a program and process to try to. Address it in these other areas and try to do it in the least cost-effective manner to um study these specific years.
Matt.
Thank you, so the causes that are, that are within in a long Manitowoc road there, here's a whole bunch of jurisdiction changes. We have a chunk, Manasha has a good chunk. Believe that woman has some too. Is this road on both sides throughout this span fully our jurisdiction, or do they have some jurisdiction on the road as well? We split the road out with Manasha. And I believe before we do anything, we should correspond with Manasha, and this needs to be a joint effort that, because it does don't point for us to do something if we don't have. The complete jurisdiction on it, if they're not in favor of looking at it, then it doesn't help us.
So yeah, I, we can, I can be in touch with the. But um we could be in touch with their company of staff and work planner uh and see if they're on board with us. You know, join me doing the study and then um, you know, take it forward and, and, and see what we can do at least in, in this area and. Um and then, you know, use it.
And I mean, I'm, I'm okay, you know, you don't have to bill for anything or whatever, it'd be our staff time, that way with this that they're on board, if there's results today, we'll.
Well, there's a motion in a second, I was on there, but I don't worry about, but anyway, I just wanna say, in the past, Manasha wanted that thirty-five in Harris. So I quite sure they won't give an issue, but just so you know.
So, so they have an engineering study done?
They have thirty-five down to. Pernin. And then it changes the forty-five because Harrison has it at forty-five.
How long is the engineering study good for?
That's a good question, we can try to get the, we can see what they did. And see what information.
Just trying to save us some time. Say, if they've already done it, they've already justified it, maybe, I don't know if there's a.
That, that's been like that for years, just so you know what, they, they've had their, their share of thirty-five for a long time. Yes, I think, I think I'm, but I also think that might help with the lake park thing, because. Manitowoc is forty-five all the way down, but you agree?
Yeah.
And if they're going forty-five and then they turn on Lake Park. And I don't think they're paying attention to thirty, right?
So Lake Park's thirty-five, and then Manitowoc is forty-five.
Yeah, and then you call it fifteen, coming in, turn like markets thirty-five.
Slung down at forty-five, it doesn't take much to.
Exactly.
Punch it back up and get to forty-five, I'm trying to consider it now.
Okay, well, we need a motion, we have a motion in a second to authorize staff to proceed with this. Study.
You know, one more speaker.
Matt, Jim?
Sorry, one more comment, just as, whatever we can figure out here, I do like the idea of highlighting this and then figuring out what repeatable process that you guys can document. Because we would need to do this, we definitely should on multiple other streets in the village to do that track, something to figure out, and I, I believe speed. Is a big part of our traffic problems. Um. Because we have a lot of, a lot of our traffic going through Harrison on a lot of our local roads. They're using our local roads to get places because it's a couple minutes quicker, they can speed or get by with things. Versus truly using the carrier streets that they should be in, and not even Harrison residents, or just pass them through.
Okay, so there's a motion in a second on, on the table to authorize staff to do this. Vote your ballot. Motion's carried unanimously, very good. Okay, final acceptance of streets in Harrison Heights, phase two. Staff is recommending approval for Dublin Pass, Ronstone Place and Bray Drive. There's a motion by Mark, second by Scott, any discussion?
There's not a discussion in this, but in the check that has been attached, we do have a record drawing, so we met everything to um.
Okay, vote your ballot. Motion's carried unanimously, very good, okay. Um. Final acceptance of Brick Lane. In North Shore subdivision. Staff recommends motion to accept the public portion of Brick Lane in the North Shore Ridge subdivision. There a motion? Motion by Mark, second by Darlene. Chad?
I just want, this doesn't have to be amended to the thing, but I just wanna note that the last letter in here from the developer is a letter to. Uh Kaylee in the village of Harrison, that there's one, he beat natural corrections as part of the July twenty twenty third service segment, we'll do the northeast half of it, so that it's.
Okay. There it goes, motion in a second to approve. Vote your ballot. Motion's carried unanimously. Okay, we are up to. Purchasing two hundred parking curb bumpers at Farmer's Field protect the brand new asphalt we just laid down for eighteen thousand four hundred ten dollars. There's. Darren, Julie. Julie.
Was this budgeted for or?
It wasn't that. That's that's good, that's good. Motion by Scott, second by Mike.
There's only one quote, there's only one place to get these from, is that why there's only one quote?
Yeah, there is, other places have lover and we decided to go country than we have a relationship with this group, so we were recommending.
Okay, that's fine.
Any other questions or comments? Vote your ballot. Motion's carried unanimously, very good. Okay. This is where the ARPA funds are going. Um there's approval for twenty one thousand one hundred sixty six dollars to contract the Civic Plus for municipal code. Meetings, website agenda, meeting management, so utilizing ARPA funds and Chad.
So um just to kind of run through this at a high level, so the village had previously contracted with Granicus to implement a new website agenda, meeting software, employee integration. Uh for two hundred fifty seven thousand dollars uh by year service contract. Uh to date, three years of that contract have been used up and the program is not fully implemented. Um purely due to the fact that Granicus continually is changing their uh project manager to sign to this project again. The other piece of it is they did not disclose that there's bill credits to do. Um that you get five bill credits to do forms, all of the contracts, if you do have nine forms, but one form uh is taking about three bill, so um there's some breach of contract here that I've reviewed with the village attorney. Um we believe that we're hopeful that we're able to get out of the uh current contract. Whether we get any money back, I'm not quite sure. To date, we've spent a hundred and seventy nine thousand dollars on it. Um we have a savings about seventy seven thousand three hundred and seven dollars to date. Um Civic Plus is the current um vendor that that operates the municipal code. Uh they have meeting software and website software that staff has had a chance to look at. Um they have an integrator package where all of them would uh work together, so if you did a search in the website. You could, would get code sections as well as uh website information. They also have a meeting software that we can implement. Um later on, once we get the other packages done, we're not recommending to cancel the Granicus contract at this point until we uh can work on getting this implemented as the board so chooses. Um and then we will work through the uh contract cancellation with Granicus once we have Civic Plus on board and they started the process of converting over the websites and the information on the website. Um at the previous meeting, um Trucky actively contacted the village of Ashwabanon. Uh because they had significant Granicus experience and the comment in the email that came back is that they have a low hate relationship with Granicus. And that they um feel like they're kind of back to the corner um and are just working with it because they don't have time to stay. Convert with it itself. Um so at this point, we are looking for approval from the board to um take on the website creation with Civic Plus for five thousand six hundred fifty three dollars as one type plus. And then we currently have four and six fifty seven, and then the unique code meeting management, which would give us the whole. Um one, actually that one thing that Granicus had told us that we would get is integrated agenda packet in the in the agenda, so when you went to the agenda item, you would actually see the, you'd be able to click and you could see the item. Um that it references the documentation, when we have value page to a three hundred page PDF to try to find that document in this one long sum, this one kind of all inclusive document, which is very difficult to look for items, so. The meeting management software that Civic Plus has is is integrated in by Heidling and you can see the documents on the agenda item. So that would be implemented as part of this, when then we would also implement the uh software to go after the meeting and work on uh whatever is needed for the board to uh use that instead of this whole whole uh software. So it's a huge savings for us all in, it's twenty one thousand dollars and I've got experience in my previous employer of working with Civic Plus and their customer services top notch and they've uh been very good to work with, so the staff is recommending uh and cutting our losses, if you will, and moving on to a vendor that uh can service us for the long term and.
Matt.
Number one, so. Um two questions here, if we end up, you know, the future of our cancellation of Granicus, the gist with ARPA deadlines. Is there anything we have to do since this was all originally ARPA with that difference of seventy seven thousand? Or we're down the road to the council, we can be free of help, is that, or how does that work?
Well, we haven't paid out that yet, so we can just transfer that in the ARPA spreadsheet with the two numbers.
Okay, and then I guess just for any other balance that we're using up, I guess, what?
We will, yes.
And then my other question is your twenty one thousand one hundred sixty six dollar request, does that include the four thousand dollars for the for the three one one product, or do you actually get a total of twenty five thousand one fifty six?
We, if you wanna add that in, you would need a uh, you would need that to be added.
Okay.
The other piece of it is they do have, and I don't have the clock, but they do have a recreation management uh package that later on we could use to do rentals at our shelters in this room. To try to manage that process a little bit more too, and so we can integrate that in, but um we feel we need to get these other things uh updated first, and then we can come back to the board at a later date for that.
Okay, Scott.
I brought this chocolate, thank you.
Who's Julie?
Hey you, um I just. In my experience in engineering for many, many years. You always have a software and then you always have a third part, third party for a bar, right, value added seller. And I'm just curious, is there anybody, anybody out there that specializes in not just the software, but the implementation of it, so that it just feels like we're spending a lot of resources and capital just on the software versus should we focus more on a service to be able to outsource the implementation of it? Not so much, it feels like Granicus is leaving it on us. Versus is there a a company out there that specializes in setup and implementation of the software, because I think that's. In my, in my engineering experience, if you get a CAD software, doesn't matter if it's three or four, they're all gonna be same, they're gonna be a little bit different, but then you gotta have a different company coming there to set up the databases, set up all the rules and all that stuff, they outsource all that, they they never do any of that. And also I'm just wondering if there's a, a service out there that specializes just in like implementation of this sort of software, whether it's.
I I I don't know the answer to that. There maybe is. Uh we have to go find one, I think a lot of this is really specific to all Harrison, so it might be more difficult. You know, setting up a website is the kind of stuff that we wanna see on the website and we have the intention to do that. So I don't.
Experts at this.
I get that, but they have, they, so they run like Granicus, who we've asked Granicus, that they can show us other Wisconsin websites of similar um communities and there is, they have, they failed to provide that. Civic Plus has provided us with a list of probably twenty some other communities in the area that they serve. So in talking with a number of those communities, they've had good luck, we've been with these people for a long time and they have implemented a lot of software and have no issues with us, so I think um you know, unfortunately, I think, you know, Granicus. And I had problems on us in the different employment of with Granicus and it's, it's the same thing, it's just unfortunately, their model. Um customer service and implementation is not strong. We did talk about this internally and and I'm of the opinion that um and you know, Vicky and it worked, Vicky and Matt worked hard on implementing Granicus and I think that frankly, we should be letting uh staff sit back, well, we should let the staff that works on it every day um do it, so you know, Megan and Trent in the office will be in the lead on it. And they will, you know, get together, but it shouldn't be on a department head to implement the software, they, you know, so I think there's some uh lessons to be learned and some processes we can really make this more efficient, but I'm optimistic that they're gonna have what we need to do what you're saying.
May may maybe they, if you, with their top notch customer service, maybe they could line you up with a firm that specializes in setting it up and for me, if we spend you know, a couple thousand dollars to be able to have the expert set it up the way we want to, that proves up, especially during election time, you know. That resources to basically outsource that just so that it's done the way that we want to, so.
I'm optimistic that, so I, having worked with these folks, I think we'll get on this software.
Okay, we already have a motion and a second. We're like.
Thank you. So first of all, I just, my, I have one more comment. The question would be is that, but they have professional services, people, they could give away the entity that they can get at. Uh my experience in my line of work, where many vendors, many software packages, that's what we have for their contracts is professional services hours. Um and bring that, you know, if you wanna bring it back, where did you staff, you guys see a bit, I'm also be in favor if you may need more money to help with the initial setup and stuff, get this done. And now with that being said, my motion is to add the additional four thousand dollars for the Civic for three one one product, I hope they manage. Good question to the.
So I, I just, so the the approximate boxes of. See on there, so if you were only want the three one one, which I think makes sense, if it's just approved with three one one. And I can bring it back as to, you know, or we can bring it back to the future, yeah, to the meeting where I think from the close, that's not all of the clues.
I'll amend my motion just to add the three one one prime at the whatever expense you needed.
I think it's right on sixteen.
But that's, I include that in my mind, sign for every, not, not to exceed eight thousand dollars, we'll do that, we have an exceed on, and you don't have to bring it back to the board.
Okay.
So there's a motion to amend and a second to amend. To not to exceed to the three one one product, not to exceed eight thousand dollars. Right? Any discussion? All right, vote on the amendment. And the amendments passed unanimously. Now we're back to the original motion which has been amended to approve the Civic Plus package. Any discussion? All right, vote your ballot. Okay, motion carried unanimously.
Yeah, President.
Yep.
One quick comment, anyone come in staff, for your relevance on this, doing some research, work back, so.
Kido, request by American Transmission Company for transmission line easement along Manitowoc Road, Chad.
So the staff is recommending denial or moving in denial or however you guys want to do it, but ultimately this is in regards to um this is on the corner, County Highway End and Manitowoc, so American Transmission Company, we believe is planning to uh do another transmission line, there's one currently there today, and we do have a new settlement in place. Um we have had the opportunity to talk to ETC and the last third company who's representing ETC related to this with the village engineer and the village attorney. Um we are not of the opinion that the board should consider granting this easement at this time, I think um they're looking for another forty five, forty or forty five foot wide easement, a forty foot easement on top of a forty five foot easement that they already have, but they aren't able to tell us where that line is, or where that easement is gonna be, and they claim it's maintained, but there aren't any trees on their property, so I'm not quite sure what that business in regards to, so playing a private citizen, under the law has to prove these. Um in talking with Andy Ross Meisel and and Lee and his firm, we feel that well, municipalities are subject to the same requirements as private citizens and we can deny uh requests for easements and see what they come back with, so um the fact that the information they provided up very weak and they don't have a lot of answers, staff is recommending denying this request and see where it goes when they come back to us, and they will say the city of Manasha has got some similar requests and they're going to say.
Scott.
Is so this would have to be an actual denial. Uh pardon.
Well, then.
I mean, is there any, this isn't one of those cases where if we don't vote on it, it passes automatically, or is this have to be an actual denial?
Well, you can make a motion. Be on the safe side. You can make a motion to approve it and vote against it.
Yeah, I'm I'm just wanna clarify, I mean, I'm all for denying it, but I mean, do we have to, I mean, do we have to deny it, if you don't approve it, it's or we just, or we just, yeah, can we just?
No, I think we need to take action on it, we can't just ignore it. Take, take action on it, stand up, now, if, you know, I'm, I I like doing affirmative motions and then if, so you make a motion to approve it and then everybody can vote against it, so it fails and it's, it's on the record that board voted against it, but.
All right, I'll I'll make that motion to approve it, to deny.
Okay, so motion by Scott, to approve, second by Mike, to approve. Any further discussion? Okay, vote your ballot.
Well, someone has.
Julie, for you.
Get yourself back in, what do you need?
You hit accent.
So we hit accent.
Okay, I did. The I.
I, yeah.
Now we're stuck, I'm stuck, I can't. Okay, cancel and do it all, we're good.
And now let her. The I, see if it'll work.
Okay, so now, oh guys. I.
Oh wait, 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 I I hit the wrong button.
Did you seriously?
What is the favor?
Yeah, see.
I can't change my voice.
I think.
Well, you have me like a super part of Nash in here.
Can smart child just.
Our recording, if you're seeing you might need, Vicky can adjust the.
Yeah, I I meant me.
Yeah, me, okay, let the record show, the board is unanimously denied. This is gonna be a request, all right? Okay.
This is why we need to get this software thing.
Eat eat more chocolate. All right, let's 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 go, guys, approval. Offer to purchase the parcel number thirty nine one thirty eight along County End, Chad.
So the board had to have the office six months ago, probably back in February, this is the piece of property that's uh adjacent to County Highway End. Uh basically near the intersection of Schmidt and County End, um the village is wanting to have a master plan to develop commercial along the frontage along County Highway End in this area, uh Scott Dewitt is uh under Dewitt's um Luniac Metals, the developer, we get those two, uh they were closing on this with the horse uh Luniac on uh September twenty second or twenty third. Uh so we are uh, which was yesterday, um so the this offer would be um basically to get under contract for that and one of the stipulations of the offer is collision upon an environment and site assessment, given that the former former farmstead had um some outdoor facility, and we just wanna make sure that we're not buying some of the undergrowth storage. So the staff was recommending approval of the offer to purchase um for that parcel thirty nine one thirty eight for four hundred and forty thousand, which is in the tip by the project.
Okay, so there's a motion by Mark, so a second. Second by Scott, any discussion? Vote your ballot. All right, motion's carried unanimously. Very good. Okay, Brandon.
Yeah, so it's the sharing the results from the NINARS, they called it sanitary server report that invested, which is covered well.
They called it sanitary server report that it stated, which is covered well, so it's not covering the sewer system. This water only. Um. It covered a wide array of topics from where our maintenance practices are to testing. Um, to. Our our service line inventory checking for materials that are out of their system. One of the items that was identified, and we did have a new representative from a person who conducted this. In the past, that representative had stated that since we're consecutive system, meaning that we purchased an apple then. We just have two meter connections, so we're not introducing our own treatment system or our own water, like adding from a well or anything. Because we're consecutive to Appleton. If we need to do emergency coordination, which means that there was an adverse test result bacteria or like a main role. And then you might have stuff coming in the ground into the system. That 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 would be done by. The the D N R rep did this visit, you know, reviewed the situation and had stated that we need to have our own emergency coordination. That we can't just rely. And so, and that does appear to align with what the the our phone says. And so. In speaking with them and speaking with Rural Water, which is a trade organization, and then they had kind of directed us to a vendor. Just because this is a very specialized process. That we've been. Honing in on. A system that would essentially allow you to beat in the chemical at that newer connection site. And so our RV operator is working with our V N R rep. As well as the the vendor that specializes in this. Process. In order to to get set up. You know, what we need to happen for us to get that random place. And then get this to the D N R satisfying. Efficiency with this.
My first question, since this is Appleton system. How do they react to us being able to inject something in their system?
Uh, so it wouldn't go back upstream, so it's only coming downstream to our system. It wouldn't be introducing it. After that way.
But our.
Tech valves in there, so the water isn't flowing back to the plant, which is one, the water's flowing in our system.
But isn't the city of Appleton still responsible for the total water quality because we buy it from them?
I would say at the plant they are, but not in our system, within our system. That's 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 our responsibility and we do bacteria testing we need in our system.
Okay. So you're not looking for any action at this time?
No, we'll be um. We back with, we'll be wanting to get the plant in place with any complaints and then when it comes back, once we go back. Everyone's gonna be here.
Okay. Okay.
I got one more question. So when did this come aboard? Just. This code that we have to.
The code isn't new. I would say the. The D N R rep enforcing it uh changed. So it's so you get a different answer with that new D N R.
So. And and I'm just pointing this out. This. Has been cooled for a while and it's now. It's twenty seventeen since we took over and we incorporated it. Into Harrison and now this is the first.
Yeah, so there was a site that said in twenty twenty one where it wasn't based by the fire. And I think and and I'm experienced in a lot of high inventory, there there's a lot of. I guess my question has was discussed about what's the force, what's prior. So when you get a new rep, you get a new areas of focus.
So when you work for a big corporation, you have internal audits, you have. You 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 catch these things before they're an issue instead of. An outsourced firm or the federal government, because you got a problem here. So what I'm saying is the time that we. Maybe include more nicely to review all the codes. Make sure that your clients, I I I don't know. I I guess I want to make sure we're better.
That's why D N R done these visits so that they can keep you on top of what needs to be done, but one. Uh, person that's been interpreted one way and the other one.
Just like that inspectors. Everyone's different.
Everyone's different, so. And they look at it differently each time they come.
It was. I guess, you know, my fault. I guess. It's just odd that it's, we're compliant and all of a sudden it's not. At a very world.
They do break out some categories, so they they cited as efficiency, not sufficient or a significant deficiency. Just kind of pushing their language, but. I would say it it's meant to be. This is what they had applied now. This is our response to it. That having, you know, all those things aligned before the G N R has learned, it's tough to know what's gonna be there.
All right, Matt.
So I do, to just wonder though, just to answer his point. Is there? Something we can do to other own system to make sure we're fully compliant? Like I know, you know, departments. Um, just example that I know, for example, with the fire department, we have I S O for. Um. Insurance rates. I know the fire chief knows the I S O handbook very well and make sure that we're in compliance with various, I had both one thing before I S O comes in, every good specs that we're, you know, saying we do every day is one of our practices to it. Um, but never surprise. So I just wondered if anything we do to make sure we're not surprised. When the D N R comes in the future, it's all.
And I think there is, and I think we don't know what they're gonna do. We follow I S O as well. The water utility and supplier like everything and all of that. This is really related to a new person that.
Other than anybody at the D N R, we we don't attach on this before we spend money.
No, let's just not create a moment.
We don't think this is gonna be a huge expense. We're considering eighteen thousand dollars and I think we just move forward with it and. Get an information.
Okay.
And you don't need a motion.
That is.
You're gonna bring us information. Okay, so we're moving on then. Okay. We have. Uh, resolution B twenty twenty four dash ten, W D N R recycling grant authorization. This is the same one we apply for every year. Motion by Julie, second by Mike.
Would you want to make an amended motion?
Why?
I want me the initial go back. I made the initial motion.
Why do we need an amendment?
It was just, it was on, somebody had pushed the button.
I make a national motion, Fran Mirey, the second through.
All right, so there's a motion by Matt, second by Mike. To approve resolution twenty twenty four dash ten. Any discussion? Motion's carried unanimously.
Well, this is one that we all have to actually sign, so there are certain copies you want to pass.
Okay, but this. Let's get through the meeting. We're gonna be in a closed session. We can sit and sign it in a closed session. We don't need to spend the time now. Record retention. Now, this is the one you want to do something differently.
Right, so currently, um, the record retention that is run file is from, um.
Yeah, the town.
It was part of the town. I did not send out um copies of the general record schedule that's.
Just just bottom.
Kind of by the the state of Wisconsin, because it is very long and in depth.
But you said you wanted to do something different, that that we're not doing a resolution here.
There's no resolution, just a motion to approve staff to cert you to cooperate that to go forward with the state recommended. Um, record retention schedule, the general schedule and in um. October or November, we will present a. Amendment to the ordinance.
Okay. There's a motion by Julie and a second by Darley to. Approve the general record schedule approved by the public records. For the village record retention. Any discussion? Vote your ballot. Motion is going unanimously. Now we'll get the change in the ordinance. Yep. Further. Okay, there was a discussion, request for discussion on term limits. And Chad, you want to speak for this?
No, but Yan will need the attorney that wrote the memo would be happy to.
And you have the turn, the memo on the back.
At the last meeting, I couldn't start up whether or not. Oh, yeah, the memo is included.
Yeah.
Uh, last meeting, there was a discussion whether or not. Question is to whether or not there could be term limits, looking into it. With nothing that says specifically yes or specifically no. Uh, as to whether or not there can be term limits. Um. Or trustees for village, village board trustees. Um, but the methodology can do so. Can mandate as a change of the the charter.
Which is a two thirds. Vote.
Yes.
So it'd be a five. Publication requirements and the whole shebang. Uh, Mike.
Well, I guess the only reason I brought it up. Um. We complained. Madison, Washington, the same old. You know, term limits, term limits, term limits here all the time. The only reason I brought it up, shared at the grassroots level here. Hopefully people see the grassroots, it gets implemented in Madison, Washington. You know, just try, I just brought it up. That was.
We weren't gonna shoot yet.
No, again, you know, I don't have years of.
We're going in by the people.
So we should send the research bills and promote it in my. As far as, you know.
Yeah. Yeah.
Bring it up and do it grassroots and.
Well.
See where it goes.
Well, now you know that that in order to do this, if you're serious about it, you would have to. Figure out exactly what you would want that to say, because we would have to go. And publish it and it would have to, it's like sixty days or something that has to be on. So you would have to sit and come up with exactly what you'd want for term limits and who to apply to. And then once we go through all that publication, then it has to be a two thirds majority vote.
Right, I guess I guess it's not, I think it's. As as a board, we should wrap our. Heads around it. I say no. It's against our constituents who voted in the office. That's that's why, that's my, that's my answer right now. But do you and you ain't any better than Madison or Washington? Don't give me that.
Wait, 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 wait. Everybody's getting a little testy. We're getting low on blood sugar. Okay, so, so the question is, do we want to, it it says. Recommended action motion as determined by board, if we want to continue this discussion. So is there a motion to continue this discussion? Okay. Well, well, you just said you wanted to talk.
I do.
Okay, you can talk.
Oh, thank you. Um, like I I appreciate you bringing this up and I agree with you in principle, but my only concern, one of my concerns is that. I mean, in the last election where I ran for my second term, there was no one else contesting the four of us. So that just scared me a little bit. I believe that we need new blood on the board, you know, and I'm happily to be replaced by somebody else could do a better job than I do. That's great. Um, but I just. I don't, I think it would be a lot for us to, you know, as Mark said, people voting for us because they want us in office. So. I agree that there'd have to be a lot more done, but I don't think it's a bad thing to challenge or to question based on any issue.
Okay, so.
Do I rebuttal that?
Oh, sure, you could talk.
I, you know, I think in. People are, usually with an anomaly, because when we ran, there was. Five or six, you know, or six running.
Right.
Or three, so I don't think it's an anomaly or not. Again, I don't know.
Okay, now you've pressed the button for abortion. Are you gonna make a motion? Well, what's your motion?
That we, that we look into term limits.
Is there a second to the motion? When you want. Going twice. The motion to look into term limits fails. A lack of a second. So that would mean we stay at the status quo. Okay. Um, Julie, did you want to speak again?
No, okay.
All right, so so. That that fails promotion, okay, um. From that, we have future agenda items. Does anybody want to add something to a future agenda item before we go into a session?
Well, for the.
Yeah.
You have three. Part one is that staff of. Bring back for discussion of possible actions, Harry and Randy Watson Associates to negotiate right away for future power room between. Midway and Manitowoc. Asking for this because while it's not on the road plan to do for a few years, it may take a few years to get the right away. We may not be able to get the right way, but if nobody can negotiate with the planning order in line, we won't.
That was one. What's two?
Thank you.
Do we have a second for that?
Okay. Yeah, I'll start off.
Thank you.
My second one is that. This can be after the budget. Processes that are not approved, but I wanted to get you out there. Because I believe the board need to work with staff and review the entire development of the agency, the developers. We have a standardized agreement that we've been trying to use. But that hasn't been reviewed for several years and things change. Like, for example, I know the parkland. With Ian Little Parkland, it's way low based on the present land and. Uh, maybe some other considerations that we talked during, I just think it'd be good for. Us as a board, we will be educated on on some of those processes and consulting and educational process for us as well.
Which is third one?
And then my last one is. Do we have to say?
Yeah.
My last one is that the end of our whole meeting to review the future trail map. Possibly highlighting prosperity and future prosperity through the trail map, so it is on our official record of future trails.
You can stick with that one too.
Yeah, that's fine. And I just have one clarification of the agenda. I'm actually, it might be. Part of the planning commission procedures. I guess part of what I'd like to find out is what is our procedure for. Building vacancies and how we can make sure that it's transparent and. I think we as a board need to. Make a decision on. Vacancies and candidates versus. Law and recommendation. So I I, well, we don't have to talk about it now.
Well.
Check. I can just fill you in real quick. So the. The by ordinance, the village president makes the appointment or or incentive the appointment of the board confirms her appointment. To the commission, to the commissions. We posted on the website, we sent it out on Facebook. And was, we were accepting applications. It was a very open process. People could come in, um.
And it was, it was longer than thirty days.
And it was, I think it was forty five or sixty days that we had.
It's out there a while.
So we, you know, and we talked to people and people come to the phone and Vicky has correspondence with. People all year round. We give them an application and they first then submitted it to a conservative survey and we keep them on file and circle back to people, so.
So the president of precedent points on, then what?
I recommend.
She recommends the board confirms her recommendation.
Then you can do.
So this, and then, and then, and then this case, we had two applicants for two opening.
Yes. But yeah, we we put it out there for like forty five days, looking for people to. Apply. Okay. So it wasn't somebody I I didn't.
Well, I I wasn't the person that I'm gonna get down until.
I didn't pick them. All right.
Sorry, today, and one question about one of the others, sorry. We're curious.
Okay.
Uh, this, can we update the date on when we plan to start bringing the interceptors? No, we're waiting until we approve me for our next changes when we got now. So, um, so that doesn't say main due anymore and whatever future date is. I would replace my request with each one of the later because. I think it's important that we. Get that figured out, so.
So we have a item in the capital improvement plan as a placeholder. We also believe we need to bring. Back the financial consultants, we look at sewer connection P and then kind of figure that all over the board before we. Uh, start planning for this because a lot of that is going to rely. This stuff, so yes, it's gonna be, it is enough for that. And it's very much.
Okay, and then we have the future.
We may put a February, March date on there, but before that, we need to bring the contract forward for orders after the budget is passed, just start moving at the soon.
Sure, but then I would request. Because holdings these future end of time. Things do here. If that should be. Well, that will be fine. Just just know, like, I get this one. Let on the wall, just getting outside of this, so I get it.
All right, we have the future meetings. Schedule. Everyone's good on the future meetings. Is there a motion to close the open meeting and to go into?
Close session.
I guess I. Or. Motion by Scott, second by Julie, to go into closed session. On there, say a roll call, roll call, nine, eight, bye.
Bye, bye. Bye.
Okay.
One minute, ten minutes.
Three, ten minute period, ten, okay, so nine o'clock, guys. All right.
Sorry, I didn't actually use it out here. If I don't apparently get up here.
Now I can really do.
But I just have a chance to.